Planning Board for October 27, 2011 will now come to order. Anyone wishing to address the Board, if you would please fill out the green sheet in front and give it to Ms. Williams. And if you speak at the podium, would you please start off by stating your name and We have our columnists portioned.
Certainly.
Ms. Remark?
Here.
Mr. Hoitzma?
Here.
Mr. Hurt?
Here.
Ms. La Sage?
Here.
Ms. Benjamin? Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Neal?
Here.
Mr. Fishback?
Here.
Mr. Bohan?
Here.
Ms. Washington?
Here.
Mr. McGinnis?
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. First will be the approval of the minutes for September 22, 2011. Everyone has a copy. Are there any changes?
Motion to approve.
With the changes, I was going to say, I called in just a couple of grammatical, nothing...
Motion to approve.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. New items, item number four, Ms. Washington.
Item number four, Land Development Code Text Amendment, Comprehensive Sign Plan for Colleges and Universities, DEV 2011-068.
May we hear from staff, Mr. Morozic?
Thank you. Dennis Morozek, planner with the city of Daytona Beach. The first item, we have got quite a few items, so we're just going to try to go through these as quickly as we can. We have a new clicker here. Confuse me. All right. The first request is a request by Rob Merrill, Cobb Cole, on behalf of Emory Riddle University and Bethune-Cookman University, to amend the Land Development Code, Article 18, to allow comprehensive sign plans or CSPs for colleges and universities. Excuse me. This request is a Land Development Code text amendment. It does allow for colleges and universities to apply for a comprehensive sign plan. The college must be a minimum of 35 contiguous acres. The submitted CSPs identify all existing and proposed signage by location and size, and the CSPs would be consistent with the comprehensive plan. Also, they would comply with the intent and the purpose of Article 18, Section 6 of the Land Development Code. The first proposed text amendment, I have provided it in your staff reports for you. However, I wanted to give you a couple of the language changes that were going to be included in there. To the extent that the CSP is different from the code, the CSP shall control the development of signs on the property which is subject to the CSP. To the extent the CSP does not address a particular subject, this code shall control, or the Land Development Code shall control. Modifications from the Land Development Code must be approved by the City Commission. This will be after review and recommendation by the Planning Board. I did, I had a couple of maps put together to demonstrate some of the properties that may qualify for a CSP, meeting the minimum acreage standards. We do have Bethune-Cookman. We do have 62.7 contiguous acres for that piece of property. We have Daytona State College, little over 112 contiguous acres. And then we also have Emory Riddle University, 62.7 contiguous acres. As far as a recommendation, staff does recommend approval of the text amendment request. The text amendment request is tentatively scheduled for the December 7, 2011 City Commission meeting, and the December 21 City Commission meeting, which is a public hearing. For the vote, there is an affirmative vote of six by the Planning Board members, shall be required to recommend approval to the City Commission.
Do any of the members of the Board have questions for the staff? May we hear from Mr. Merrill?
Thanks, Dennis. Mr. Chairman, Board members, Rob Merrill for the record, with Cobb Cole, 150 Magnolia Avenue here in Daytona Beach. This is a pretty straightforward request. You've seen this request in a couple of other contexts, both of which I think have proven to be an additional useful tool in the planning toolbox for the planning staff and for members of the, of the public that have used those before. Essentially, it provides the ability for a larger institutional user, in this case, universities of a certain size, which we have three, as Dennis told you, to comprehensively look at the signage on their campuses, do things like come up with thematic consistency, different ways to make sure directional signage, signs are effective and consistent, and essentially make signage more tasteful and consistent with what your code wants. The reason for the plans as opposed to just looking at the code book is, in these situations, much like the one you see is the next one on your agenda with the hospital, a lot of these larger institutional users have unique needs. Instead of coming in and trying to get variances for different types of signs that they need, this allows them to come in and show you the whole plan, this is what we're going to be doing, into the future. So it's a, it's a, it's a plan, much like your comp plan looks into the future. And you've seen these, you know what they look like. The next one on your agenda actually is just a small change to an existing plan that you approved a couple of years ago. So you can open that up and see what we'd be talking about when a, when a comprehensive sign plan would come before you. With that, I think that, you know, Dennis and staff have given us a positive recommendation. You've seen this before, you've approved it before, and I hope that you, that you support this as well. I can tell you that on behalf of Bethune-Cookman and Emory Riddle, we are prepared and currently beginning the process of, of thinking through what's going to be necessary in bringing forward plans for their signage that hopefully you'll see in the next few months as a result of, of course, your vote and City Commission's vote about this amendment to the code.
Does anyone have any questions, Mr. Merrill?
No, Tracy?
No! No!
This is about...
I spent a lot of time emailing...
This is about signs.
No, I spent a lot of time emailing this week.
I didn't say no comments, no questions.
She's the way, she'll sit down so I can't answer. I see, I get that, that's why I stand here for a little while.
I'm going to ambush you.
Yeah, I know.
Well, let me just ask one. The schools already have their own sign plan at the moment. It's just not a comprehensive sign plan as called for in our, in the Land Development Code.
No, they don't. They don't have any sign plans.
There's no, I've never noticed a great discrepancy in, in the types of signs around the campuses.
Yeah, you'll find, as you look at these campuses, you'll find that there is kind of a mixed match, you know, they've sort of done it over the years kind of thing. And I can tell you that just with my experience with these two universities, already sitting down with some sign experts and planners and talking about themes and types of signs and where they should be and how they should be effective, they are starting now to think about plans, but they haven't in the past. So I think it's a good thing.
Well, they keep expanding.
Right. Yeah, the universities keep getting bigger, and then, and things are being done as patchwork. And, you know, it's kind of like, you know, you see things done as planned developments, and they, and they look at the more global view of things, and it tends to be a good thing. Again, I would emphasize that, much like a rezoning, a planned development rezoning, or any other rezoning, or an amendment to the code, these plans come back to you. I'm not asking you to approve any plans tonight, other than the next item on the agenda.
And that one's already approved, at least the plan is.
But we're asking you to give us the opportunity to bring these before you. And I think that you'll, you'll find that when you see them, you're going to, much like you did with the hospital plan, you're going to recognize a lot of good things came out of these institutions stepping back and looking globally at their, at their campuses.
Have there been any difficulties with codes citing signs that did not meet the city code?
Yeah, I think over the years, they've had signs they couldn't do, things they couldn't do based on the code not being written for these institutional type users. I think Dennis might be able to address that better than I can. Well, I don't know. I think we probably need to hit one of the planning historians in here to do that.
Paul McHitterick could address it.
Yeah, we get Prelethi in here, I'm sure he could give you some stories. But I think the answer is yes. I think that the, the reason for looking at it more globally does potentially produce some types of signs that, that, you know, the code didn't think of, or ways that signs can be done that weren't thought of. But wait, wait and see. I mean, you get to say yes or no when you see them. That's the point.
Thanks.
I understand the idea behind it, and I think of the spatial district that was set up for sports districts, and I think of the hospital district, and I remember the Florida Memorial Hospital going through signage and labor-winning banners down the side. We had input into all that. And I see the colleges now coming up, and obviously it's being done because you want a difference from the sign restrictions that we have, of which you were a part of...
Right.
And putting together.
Oh, you're talking about the electronic message center signs?
Right.
Well, this is much broader than that, of course.
I understand that, but that's going to be coming right back around the corner. You know it, I know it.
Sure.
Pretty soon, you're going to be here wanting a big monstrous sign sitting on the corner of a major intersection or something like that. Oh, I guess that's next on the...
Next.
I don't, the word monstrous seems like a...
That's what I mean, and it's a way of circumventing. And that, I guess that concerns me to a degree. I understand the purpose and the reason, and the clause in here that I noticed, but I noticed it was pointed out, that the CSP shall control development of signs on the property which is subject to the CSP.
Right. That's a direct quote from the code for, for planned developments.
Yeah.
Essentially, this is a planned development for signs. And if you don't, if you don't subscribe to the concept of somebody coming in and giving you a custom zoning piece, if you will, because you're worried that they'll bring you something that allows them to do more than they could otherwise, or something different than the code provides, I would submit to you that you're different from most people in the state of Florida, because, most governments, because it's been widely used for 25 years, the concept of planned developments. I mean, if you talk to your planners and your, your planning attorneys, they're going to tell you, this is an important tool to have in the toolbox, the planned development tool, that is. This is just a micro version of a planned development tool, and you get to say yes or no when you see it. I think you probably know, Larry, based on the planned developments you've seen, it's a give and take. If I'm going to come in here and ask you for something that's different than the code in a way that you might find to be bigger or more than I would, should have expected, I'm usually bringing something to the table to compensate for that, whether it's bigger trees to make Bob happy, or whatever it is. It's something, and it always happens that way. So I want you to know that there's no, there's nobody here that's going to be bringing you something that's going to, and I'm not opening a door to offend you with something. It's an opportunity that I think will be a positive.
Well, you mentioned something that's very important, though, too, and that's landscaping involved with the signage when that comes along.
Absolutely.
Because it goes hand in hand.
Certainly, absolutely.
Any other questions or comments?
Oh, you're asking for comments now?
Not, not from, from him.
Oh, okay. We're waiting.
From him, from him. Okay. Is anyone, I guess, in the audience, we should just speak... I've already put his over. Was he up? Anyone in the audience wishing to speak for or against? Hearing none. Board, could I have your comments?
Now you want comments?
I'm looking for comments.
Actually, I have struggled with this one a lot. I definitely see the value in this. I see what's happened at the hospital. I see the need for it when I go on any of these campuses. You don't even have to go on Daytona State College campus. You can just drive down 92 and see four different signs and three different font types, different colors, different look, I mean, it's just hit or miss. What I struggled with was actually what you brought up, that once it's a comprehensive sign plan, that all of the criteria that follow B, which are in C, basically everything becomes negotiable, and I'm not a great fan of everything being negotiable. But, and especially when I looked at what the Commission did with this, they kept everything very narrow. They wanted to be conservative in introducing these kinds of signs, and yet, the Commission did allow for any institution of higher learning on a site consisting of at least eight contiguous acres...
Right.
...to come forward. The comprehensive sign plan in this instance, I think is actually, I think is very necessary, especially given, given some of the problems, as I said, when we were doing Daytona Kennel, that I think we have with our current sign allowances, sides, sizes, workability. So while I think the Commission made a policy statement of keeping it very narrow, I think this reflects that policy, and also personally will give us something of even greater value in our colleges. And I'm glad that it's 35 acres, you know, it's not every little hit or miss, because there are a lot smaller, there are some smaller private colleges, things like that.
But it says eight acres here, too.
Yeah, but they, eight acres is not a comprehensive sign plan. So this is 35 acres, colleges and universities, so that's, I'm very comfortable with it.
I guess part of my concern goes back to the electric signs. When I stop and think, I don't think we've got one that meets our criteria in the city yet.
Yes.
And each one that keeps coming up is for an exception, and I guess that's kind of what I look at, particularly when I see the next one. And those are the things that concern me with it. And, and yes, I think the need is there, and I think it is a tool for planning, but I have concern. I have concern. But I see it, you know, as a positive thing, too, to where, you know, like I said, the campuses have, have grown, they keep growing, and the schools get most of their input from the students that are lost, saying, I don't know where this building is, I don't know where that building is. And if they could have a comprehensive sign code, they could, you know, because now they can't currently color code one that goes to the administration building, color code one that goes to, you know, to the classrooms, and this gives them the information to, to get a groundwork to where it's easier to navigate it.
They try to state what the color code on their buildings. I don't know if they still have it, but they did it a few years ago.
Well, about the time a sign goes up on one, they tear one down.
Mm-hmm.
But I think it's, it's a good positive thing to let the, the planners, they have a footprint to where they can get done directionally how they want.
Do we have any other comments?
I do, Mr. Chairman. I, I also struggle with this, and while I agree with my fellow members that the, it's, it's good to have a sign plan that's consistent throughout the campus. The way we've defined our 35 acres, it includes contiguous streets, and I thi, I think a college, they don't need a, a, a Land Development Code amendment to decide that they're going to put in effect a sign plan. They could have done, and they have done, sign plans to some extent. And I also looked on it as more work for our code people, because in addition to having their usual, especially with the streets involved, the contiguous streets, that now they know what the code, the sign codes are for the city, but now there's going to be a, an aberrant code for these streets that are included in the 35 contiguous acres, where the signs, the signs that are there may not meet, through negotiation on the comprehensive sign plan, they may not, may not meet, strictly meet the codes that are currently in the Land Development Code for signs. So they'd be looking at a different criteria for the signs in these particular venues. Then getting on to the next item, which is the, once we have the comprehensive sign plan, and then we do, in the future, say, have an electronic message sign request come in as part of that plan. The comprehensive sign plan gives, it seems to me, much more flexibility than the, than the, the electronic message center amendment that the Commission worked so hard on for, for two years. And I agree with our chairman, we seem to have all the exceptions come before us, even though the, the EMC ordinance has only been in effect for a few months. We have all of these exceptions, and a comprehensive sign plan, actually, it seems to me, is a gateway for more exceptions, because the comprehensive sign plan gives much more flexibility for the, for the person holding that comprehensive sign plan. And I guess my, my basic thing, if a, if the university wanted to have a sign plan, it seems to me that they, that they could devise a sign plan without there being a Land Development Code amendment, saying 35 acre university can have a sign plan, a comprehensive sign plan.
Well, maybe that's consideration. Maybe, maybe we should think about a CSP, since we have it coming forward, having certain regulations that we set up just like for the electric sign. Couldn't do that tonight, but that might be another alternative to it.
I mean, do we need more places for comprehensive sign plans?
Huh?
Do we need more places where we want to put comprehensive sign plans?
You don't represent any places of assembly of 1,000 seats or more, do you, Rob?
No, I'm not bringing forward anymore, but I would just caution you to, to talk to the people, the staff people that are administering this code and have been for years. They're saying, we need them.
Oh, no, listen, Rob, I agree with you, there's arguments on both sides. It makes it easier from a planning...
No, I'm saying, I'm not making an argument, I'm just pointing to the people who you were talking about earlier, who would administer this, they're saying, yes, the answer to your question is, I'm not answering, I'm saying their answer is yes. We recommend approval, we like this idea. We've been using it in some other contexts, and we think it works well. So the whole planned development concept, I'm sensing, from a couple of you, is sort of under attack for reasons that I think are based on, well, somebody can ask for something more if they have that opportunity. Well, I would remind you that they still have to come back before you guys, and before the Commission. So, I mean, there's your safeguard right there, and I think the staff's telling you, this is a good planning tool, we like it, we can use it, it will help us. And you were raising those questions, that's the only reason why I jumped up, because I know they've answered that already, and Dennis wasn't jumping up, so.
Well, that's, he knew you were there.
But that's, just like he explained, any exception to this, like, even if this didn't pass, any exception to the thing that's current has to come back and be voted on. The same.
Oh, sure.
This doesn't mean that it doesn't, or it does, that goes by the other code. This just makes it uniform, and it gives them a sign plan to where they know how they can plan with their stuff.
Types of signs, I know everybody's kind of thinking about the electronic signs, because that's on the hospital's item on the next agenda, but there are lots of signs, there are directional signs, that staff, I think, can tell you that there's just, there may be too many of them, because they weren't thinking about that when they wrote the sign code for things like shopping centers and, and, and office buildings and things like that. A university's got a lot more things going on than a shopping center or an office building, so sometimes they need more signs. And they're not necessarily contrary to the intent and purpose of the sign ordinance, which is trying to make things tasteful, not too big, you know, not offensive, and yet useful and helpful to the people that are looking at them. And that's, there've been, there have been some situations where there's not a good fit. That's the need for this. Like I said before, not, it's not intended to bring something offensive to you. And if you see it and you think it's offensive, I mean, that's, when you're talking about signs, a lot of what we're talking about is passing that sort of sniff test of, does it offend me? Or do I think it's going to be useful and helpful? Or do I think it's going to create a safety problem? Or do just the opposite, which is something I'll mention the next agenda item. But I think you, I think we're sort of overthinking one very narrow aspect of this and sort of missing the forest. That's all I'll say.
And if I could add, the reason we have a text amendment is because they can't do comprehensive sign plans currently. They can't do them, they can't be reviewed, they use the, they could make changes, but if they wanted to, let's say they found that they needed, instead of 15, they needed 17 parking signs, or they needed a little larger identification sign on a building, right now, there's not a way to do that except sign by sign by sign by sign, which, when it comes to a university doing that, a school, they're, he's not sitting here free. And so, all of this, I think, makes sense within the context that we're looking at. The other reason for me that I think it makes sense, I drove out there tonight, and yeah, we're looking at electronic message center signs, but, you know, I've been lost at Emory Riddle. I have been lost on Bethune-Cookman, trying to figure out, do I, can I park here, or can faculty park here, you know, where's this building, where's, you get lost really easily. But not only that, yes, they could right now, under the code, every single one of these universities could have an electronic message center sign that fits our code, fits those criteria. What that means is they'd have an eight-foot-tall sign, they can't go more than eight feet tall. But if you guys had actually looked at the square footage that's allowed, it's eight feet tall by 40 feet long to get 360 square feet. There's a little problem with what we have in the code. So until, and he could be up here asking, and I don't think there's any one of us that would want to see that anywhere. So I think this makes sense. I think it, that there's plenty of sign information to work with, there's pages and pages and pages of it, an article that tells you when you're doing an awning sign, when you're doing a building sign, how high, what your square footage, they're going to work within those parameters. And the, given the problems with what we have, and something that was just done six months ago, I think this is the smartest way to deal with this problem for these properties.
Well, I think, I guess I hasten back to the hospital.
Oh, it's me.
Memorial, Florida Memorial. I think what came forward and what came out of it...
Yep.
...worked very well. It really did. And so, that's a plus, as far as I see it.
Any other comments?
Make a motion, we approve Land Development Code text amendment, comprehensive sign plan for colleges and universities, DEV 2011-068.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
One, two, three.
One opposed.
How many of us are here?
Item number five, comprehensive sign plan modification, Halifax Hospital, DEV 2010-070.
Mr. Morozic.
Thank you again. Dennis Morozek, planner with the city of Daytona Beach. Catch my breath here a little bit, I feel a little bit better. All right. The, the next item, item number five, is a comprehensive sign plan modification for the Halifax Hospital Medical Center. It is a request to modify and approve comprehensive signage plan for the, for the Halifax Hospital Medical Center located 303 North Clyde Morris Boulevard. The proposed modification will allow for the replacement of an existing site entry identification pole sign with an electronic message center sign. The property is located between Dunn, Heinemann, West ISB, and Clyde Morris. The zoning of the property is HM, which allotted to have the comprehensive signage plan. CSP, this particular CSP was originally approved in February of 2009 by action of the City Commission. The CSP does control the development of the signs and graphics on the campus. Any proposed CSP amendments require Planning Board recommendation prior to City Commission The applicant has, has proposed a few changes to the previously approved CSP. I wanted to roll through those for you. I did put them all in the staff report, but I wanted to, to highlight it because they are the, the changes to the CSP. The first one is a, just a house cleaning, excuse me, first one is just a house cleaning item. It adds the Exhibit A and the page number to the, to the summary page, also adds Exhibit A, which includes the electronic message center sign, out of page 15 of the CSP. The second change, on page seven, Section Four, Sign Design and Construction, modified language that recognized the EMCs. I did put the, the added language, the additional language is in red up on the board for you. And the previous language didn't allow for LED signs. The new language does, does account for the new proposed EMC sign. The third proposed change, page seven, Section Four, Sign Design and Construction, this particular language is all new language. It knows language in the EMC ordinance specific to the uniqueness of the EMC signs. Let's see here. Another proposed change, page nine, Sign Category, Description, added the electronic message center sign diagram to the identification sign types. The proposed EMC signage is, is further described. Just wanted to show you the location, that's where the new... Just wanted to show you the location, that's where the new EMC sign went there on page, I believe it was page nine. And the final change to the language on that same page for the allowable design options. And really what this language does is allows the EMC to replace the existing pole sign. Also allows the, the additional language allows the EMC where previously was prohibited. As far as the location of this sign, the proposed sign, it is replacing the current 35-foot pole sign, which is located out there on the corner of Clyde Morris and West ISB. Got a picture over there of the current sign for you. This is the proposed EMC sign. I want to run through some of the dimensions for you. I've outlined the sign cabinet. In this case, the sign cabinet is 355 square feet. Code allows the sign cabinet to go up to 360 square feet. The EMC display area is at 24% of the sign cabinet area. Code does allow the EMC to go up to 50% of the sign area, so it's less than what the code actually allows. The non-EMC signage, and this is something that we're taking a look at also, this is the sign that would be above the EMC sign, the code allows up to 15% maximum for a non-EMC sign additional to the EMC signage. In this case, they provided only 9%, which is also below the code's maximum allowance. And then finally, the height, the code does allow for eight feet for an EMC maximum height. The applicant has proposed a height of 19 feet 16 and 1/2 inches, exceeding the code by 11 feet 6 and 1/2 inches. So, for a recommendation, based on staff's analysis and review, the requested amendment to the Halifax Hospital comprehensive signage plan will be in compliance with the land development code and comprehensive plan if approved by action of the city commission. Majority vote of the planning board members present and voting is required for recommendation to approval to the city commission. Thank you.
Any questions, staff? Does that, 19 feet 6 and 1/2 inches, does that include the base? And if not, is the base, what, two feet?
No, that's, my measurement had the base included in that. Rob, you?
Yes, the whole thing.
The whole thing, base included.
What's the length of, I didn't see that in place.
I can, let's see here, I do, we had. Yeah, I've got them on page nine.
Why don't we hear from the applicant?
Wait, I had, just, I'm sorry, I was waiting for you to, just so I'm clear, and where we're looking at, page two on our staff report, item two, the language that's added, beyond that which is explicitly permitted related to electronic message center signs, we mean explicitly permitted in the CSP, right? Not in code as it relates to?
In the CSP for this particular EMC sign.
Okay, so then getting an explicit down here, when we look at number five, the pole-mounted sign, this sign is going to be replaced, and then it goes on to say, "One of the nine primary may be constructed as..." What if they decide that instead of at the intersection of Clyde Morris, where the pole sign is, what if they decide they'd rather have this at the entryway to the hospital?
Well, they've identified the location of the pole sign and that they were going to be replacing that pole sign-
That sign, so even though-
With the EMC sign.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear, I mean, that's how I read it, but I want it to be clear.
Then they're also asking to increase the overall height of those pole signs by two feet.
And, I was just going to say, that's to accommodate the 20-foot EMC sign.
Because otherwise, the EMC would be non-conforming with the CSP if, okay.
I'm sorry. Thanks, Mr. Chairman, planning board members. Again, for the record, Rob Merrill with Cobb Cole, 150 Magnolia in Daytona. I've got a few, I've got actually a slide, a PowerPoint, and I'm going to give you a handout if you will. This is the sniff test I was referring to earlier. Let's take a look at it and see what we think. First, let me just, let me just say that essentially, this is an amendment to an existing approved comprehensive sign plan for the hospital, which you all approved about two years ago. And the only thing that's being changed is the sign at the corner of Clyde Morris and ISB. And the sign that you see, can we get that PowerPoint teed up? Great. The sign that you see in this first slide, we're looking now west on the, I guess from the middle of the road on ISB, at the existing sign. Go ahead and hit the next slide, I think it's going to give us a better, not a better view, but a view behind, so at least you can see the sign above the trees here. That's a view from the west, I'm sorry, we had a view from the east before. And that sign that's there now is 35 feet tall. And we are going to be replacing it with, go ahead and keep going through the slides, just in the interest of time, there's just another shot there, keep going. You're going backwards, okay, that gives you the picture of the sign that Dennis gave you essentially in his presentation. So, go ahead, what I've asked the sign company to do for us, no, go back now to the one you just showed? Great. Is, no, jumping around, right back to where you were just right before that, right there, stop. Okay. This shows you basically a photo simulation to scale of the proposed sign that you saw in the picture that Dennis showed you on the site. So, you can get, and I gave you the printout because really, when you look at it on the monitor, it doesn't give you a very good, a very good view of it, but if you look at that page, that's the same as on the monitor. You get a real feel for what the sign's going to look like sitting on the ground at this location. As you can see, if you look at the page, the next page after that, go ahead and go to the next slide if you could for me, please? Thanks. You'll see as you look at that page, and I'm going to point to the slide, you'll see that basically, the sign, if it's there, is going to be covered by those low shrubs or the trees that are lower than the palm trees. If you look at the next page, what I asked them to do was basically just Photoshop out the tree, so you'd get a view of what it would look like, just from a standpoint of the perspective, so you could see whether you thought it was too big or too wide or too tall or too narrow, God forbid, or too short. But you would essentially get a look at it as if you were driving down the road. The idea is, you know, this is, this is what you're going to see, this, what you see is what you get on this one because it's to scale. Well, that, actually, this, I know that this slideshow brings up some questions. There's some trees there, they're going to be blocking the sign, obviously. What are you going to do about that? And, Mr. Chairman, I think you mentioned on the previous discussion that landscaping is a part of signage, and I agree completely. It's certainly a part of it when it blocks a sign, because then the sign's not really doing any good for you. So, what I did was, I asked our landscape architects to prepare an exhibit about that. I'll pass that around, too. Unfortunately, you know, you all have the rule about the 48 hours now, that if you don't get it to you 48 hours, it might infect your computer, so I can't, I can't put it on the overhead, but, did we lose the overhead projector thing that used to be right here? I'm just going to, unfortunately, the people in the audience won't be able to see it if we don't have that, but if you all could pass that around, I'm going to talk to you a little bit about it. You do have it?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, why don't we give one copy to them?
You've got one? We'll share. We can share. You need one, Chris?
Let's just go to the, let's look at the first page first. Oh, okay, it's that camera, not that one. What I'm, do we have the portable mic, Dennis? So I can stand over there and just point to that, so everybody knows what I'm?
There you go.
There it is.
I'm actually going to use a little different picture here, because I've got some highlights on here I wanted to talk about.
Where's, I think he has to turn on the TV or whatever.
I don't know. Sorry about that, I got to remember that 48-hour rule and make sure I get everything over here in time.
Last time you forgot, you asked for the king one for a month, another call.
Yeah, it took a month last time, it's just a few minutes this time, so, thanks, Rich. Do we, do we know, oh, I'm just not seeing it there, it's up here, though, okay. All right, then how do I do this? Because if I'm, oh, okay, here we go.
There you go.
Okay, a couple of things I wanted to point out to you, I highlighted on mine that you don't have on yours. First of all, the, if you look at this corner right here, this is the place where you saw the landscaping that was blocking the sign. And that also was blocking the, it's underneath it, the pole sign that's there now. You also saw these palm trees over here, blocking the pole sign that's there now, the taller sign, as you were looking from the east. And what's going to happen here is, everything that's got an X on it is going to be relocated. Essentially, this area here is entirely new. The area that you see in pink shows the existing fence on the outer part, and then it's going to be relocated to go behind the sign, like this. And all of the other landscaping here is going to be installed behind the sign, so at the view from whichever perspective you come, the landscaping's behind the sign, not in front of it. But there will be actually more landscaping, just located such that it doesn't block the view of the sign. And I think that's all I needed to say about that, unless you have any questions about it.
So, that would be more landscaping than this last-page Photoshop thing you gave us?
Yes, we're adding, we're relocating what's there, Tracy.
Okay.
Moving all those palm trees, because they can be moved. We're leaving the hardwoods that you see on the landscape plant there where they are, Bob. And we're planting a lot more around the sign, but the only things that are planted next to the sign are low enough that they're not going to block the sign. And if you want the details on what plants are, Paul Monburger's here, so he can actually answer questions for you about that if you have.
Because I do have a question about relocating where are the palms on another part of the-
Come on up, Paul.
Yeah.
He told me, when I asked that question, when I asked that question, he said, he said, "Behind the sign." I said, "Thank you."
Paul Monburger, what was the question, Tracy?
The, all those palm trees, one, two, three, four, five, whatever, there's 10 of them maybe, they're relocated where?
Clustered behind the sign. If you look at the plan there, they're kind of shown, they're all, it's hard to make them out, because they're all clustered together behind a new landscape area.
Okay, so they would, they would be in the corner?
This area here is a clump, a clump of palms.
Okay.
And then these shrubbery and stuff that kind of go down.
Yeah, you know, I've got, the next picture I was going to show you was the, was the perspective that Paul did.
Oh, here's another picture.
But that doesn't, what you saw in the plan view is an actual landscape plan that shows here's where trees are exactly and what type they are, although it's not, doesn't give you the complete diagram with all the different types. There will be one that does that when it comes forward, correct?
Why are you removing these? Because they don't block the signage.
The ones in the front, they absolutely do. The picture that I showed you that blocked the new sign. Let me see a picture that you guys were looking at.
This picture, these are all very low level.
Here, let me, let me show you, this is, yeah, we don't want to remove anything that's not blocking the sign. There's the picture of the sign, the new sign, right there.
We're talking about the existing.
The reason why you don't see the sign.
Existing picture that you got.
Yeah, I'm, what I'm trying to do, Rich, is I'm trying to not block the sign, the proposed new sign.
We're looking at the existing signage, existing landscaping, and from that angle, it doesn't, it doesn't.
Take a look at the second to last page of the PowerPoint. Where'd that go? Oh, yeah, here we go. The second to last page shows you what the new sign will look like from the rest. Do you see it? No, the reason why you don't see it is because that clump of bushes blocks it.
Yeah.
If you look at the next page, I asked them to Photoshop the bushes out of the picture. Now you can see the sign. That clump-
So you left in.
Larry, when you look at the plan view, it's kind of deceiving, because the bushes look like they're way away from where the sign, where you think the sign is, but it's not. It's all about the perspective when you're coming around that corner. Those bushes are the ones that in fact block the sign. I looked at it the same way you did it first, and then I had to look at those pictures again.
But these low lying-
They don't block the existing sign, because it's 35 feet in the air.
What picture are you?
Oh.
Now, I will say, I was going to ask this, I was out there Sunday, I went and measured those low lying bushes. Those low lying bushes are 15 to 18 feet tall. What looks like down there on the corner is low lying bushes. There are three large hawthorn trees, there is a large pin oak right behind them, and then another large pin oak, and then you have the oleander. But those hawthorn trees, not only in terms of tall, they're huge, because I will say, when I was thinking about this, it's like, how do you see anything?
If you look at that line picture, it's not a very good picture, but you can see there's actually layers. I went and looked at it myself today, too, and it's kind of like, it's a layered, you know, nice, looks like somebody's front yard. But Paul's going to come in and make it look even better, he's going to tell you how.
You're right, there are layers, and there are some Indian hawthorn trees and some Indian hawthorn shrubs of different varieties in there.
The trees are huge.
And they've gotten kind of thick. And because they're so close to the road, they really block your vision of the sign from the road. So, what we're proposing to do, along with those palms, we won't relocate this stuff, this little mob of landscaping in the corner, just because it's not relocatable. The palms are, you can transplant those pretty easy, but we will replant even more plants up there toward the sign, to kind of beautify the sign and pull the stuff back. Because otherwise, if we left it, you wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to see the sign from Clyde Morris, or from that intersection of Clyde Morris and ISB.
When you take out a hardwood, are you putting back a hardwood somewhere?
Um, I wouldn't-
There's a couple of, there's a couple of really nice oaks. I mean, they're, they're small.
We're not proposing to move any oaks.
Well, there's an oak right behind, this, that, where the hawthorns are, there's an oak right behind them, and that's about 18 feet.
I'll be honest, I didn't have a tree survey to do this, but certainly, we will plant everything that we take out and mitigate for that. And I believe we're planning on planting more than is there.
You know, this is kind of, the whole landscape part of it was not really originally part of this, Tracy, until you started asking me those questions, which I thought were very good questions. That's why Paul scrambled very quickly to come up with, here's what we want to make it look like. And the idea is, we don't want to block the sign with bushes or trees, and we're willing to plant more trees, and that's what I'm stipulating to on the record, in order to do that, so that we have a sign that's functional. There was a couple of things I wanted to mention other than landscaping, if you all are done with any questions about the landscaping. Okay. You know, this is a taller sign than eight feet, kind of like a sign you saw a couple months ago. We had a long night and long discussion about how tall electronic signs or signs that have electronic components should be. I think we ended up differing sort of right down the middle on that, on that sign. I think since then, I've thought about it quite a bit, and I've actually taken some time to, to read some of Tracy's research that she, that she referred to that night. And I want to make that part of your record tonight. There are essentially two documents here.
Boy, even I didn't print it out.
I had to kill some trees to do that, and I'm sorry for that, but I think it's an important thing, a piece of information for the city to have, and I'll tell you why. The, both of these organizations, I'm going to grab it back for just one second, one of them is the, is the United States Department of Transportation, the other one is the United States Sign Council in conjunction with the University of Pennsylvania. Did a lot of research about this, and thank you, Tracy, for finding it. And essentially, I'm going to really, obviously, I'm going to summarize it, but they get to on the, on the point of height and safety and speed of cars and distance that people can read things, they get to the conclusion that the bottom of the sign where you start to read ought to be five, seven feet above the grade, above what you're looking at, so that you don't have to look up or down, you can sort of have it right in your vision as you're driving down the road, so it's safe. And of course, a lot, there are a lot of other variables, and our sign guys here, he can talk to you about how he came up with 19 feet 6 inches, because it was developed through trying to find that one. because it was developed through trying to find that window, and there's where it was. Okay, the top of it's 19 and 6. And it's based on making the thing readable for people. This is not... I'm not going to say that if somebody's trying to advertise it, it's a bad thing, but that's not what's trying to be done here. This is trying to get a message out to people who are coming down the road, in this case, at 45, 50 miles an hour, so they can read it and not crash their cars. So this is very much, in terms of the height, 8 feet versus 19 and 1/2 feet, a safety benefit, not detriment, that we're bringing to you. Now, I know Tracy's talked a little bit about that sign thing and whether it ought to be done legislatively or we ought to look at it on a case-by-case basis. I don't know the answer to that, but what I'm trying to explain to you is when I'm bringing the cases to you, I'm trying to make sure you understand that in those situations, and in this situation at the corner of Clyde Morris and ISB, high-speed area, multiple lane-wide in both directions, in all four directions, this sign, I believe, and our experts believe, and those two reports seem to conclude, is appropriate. Properly sized, and in this case, proportionate to the size of the property and the building that we're talking about here. I know those are a lot of things that I said to you a couple of months ago, the same sort of thing. And I'm hoping, as we're moving along with these things, we're hopefully coming to grips with maybe... Maybe some of the things that the lawyer's saying, or at least getting closer to where you want to be. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. I also have our sign folks here, and as you know, our landscape folks and our engineers, and they're happy to answer any questions you have as well. I will tell you, and I've been appearing in front of this body for 25-some years. I'm coming back with another sign that's too tall. I'm telling you right up front. I told you that last time. And I can tell you that Bethune-Cookman intends to replace their sign on ISB with an electronic message center where you see the Tri-Vision. So there's another one, and that's going to be a particular circumstance. I'm telling you about it now because I want you to understand that if you're worried this is opening a door, well, it's not. The door's already there, and it's already something that I think you all should trust yourselves to look at and decide whether it makes sense. This will make sense, and I think that one's going to make sense when you end up seeing it. Thanks.
I have one question on your Page 11 for the oncology center. And you're showing the wall-mounted sign, but you have in front there also the monument sign.
Page 11.
And from what I saw...
Oh, in the comprehensive sign plan.
On the oncology sign, I think you had it at 17 feet, 8 inches, etc. You're going to have a monument sign that large in front of the oncology sign?
Well, first of all, Larry, the page that you're looking at is not being changed. The only pages that are being changed are the ones that Dennis referred to, and the only graphic that's being changed on the approved CSP is the last page, which shows the sign we've been talking about, with that as the electronic component. And I point out to you, when you look at that last page, that as Dennis is pointing out, the electronic component to this sign, I meant to mention it earlier, is less than half the size of what it could be. But the answer... I'm sorry. I forgot what I meant to say earlier, so I said it. But in answer to your question, Larry, there's nothing being changed in that page at all.
Any other questions, Mr. World?
Ambush, Tracy? Or should I stay?
No, no, I have a question for staff.
Would you like to ask staff?
Yeah. With what we were just handed tonight, and of course, there's nothing anywhere actually on the record, does this need to be part of the motion, correct? Because this would actually... Okay.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak for or against? Any other comments from the board?
Wait, he's coming up.
John Nicholson, 413 North Grandview Avenue. Yeah, I wasn't going to until I saw the description. When I went out there, you all have a discussion now about the fence and the fence being moved. I was told that it was going to go in the exact location and everything was going to remain the same, and I was going to argue, now is the time to talk about the fence because to put that behind the fence is absurd. So that being moved, the plant's being moved, I'm happy with all of that, almost. There are 14 palm trees that they're talking about moving. I didn't look to see how many palm trees are behind where the proposal is now. So you're talking 14 to 20 palm trees in about 40 feet. That would mean that they will touch at the crowns one after the other, and you will have a picket fence behind it. I'm not real fond of picket fences. I'm real fond of tree trees. And the trees that they have here, they're going to take out. I don't mind clearing the vision. It makes sense. It's absolutely necessary. Two things I would ask you to think about, the possibility of moving it closer to the street and see if any of the trees could be saved. Two, instead of putting all 14 in the line behind it, perhaps they could be moved back a bit. If they are within view, if you moved them back closer to the north, it might prove it. I just don't like the accumulation of 14 poles sitting behind this and no greenery because that's what you're going to have behind it. I'm not... I didn't see the thing whether they're putting all those little... We require all these nitsy little plants that eventually die, and they're difficult to take care of. That's one of the things I hope we address in the Land Development Code. I hope all that garbage is not in the front. It's something simple and easy that they can put in, that can be maintained, that's attractive. That's not very costly, that we don't have to worry about year after year because we don't do that well in the city of Daytona Beach. But basically, it could be brought to move to its optimum location. Because I know they want to put it back in the same place, but it may not be the optimum location. If you're going to move it now, is the time to move it if it be required optimally. If you can look at it and say, this is the best location if you went 10 foot further or whatever, I would ask that you think about it now, and secondly, about the trees in the back, the little fence in the back. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Anyone else? Board? Any more comments?
Comments? So now we have... We have our comprehensive sign plan with the EMC. And the variance is a sign higher than the Land Development Code permits. So that becomes the flexibility that the applicant has. He can come in with his... With the comprehensive sign plan, and in the flexibility, we're determining if that meets our flexibility test, the size of the sign, in this case. I guess it just troubles me that even though we have our recently passed EMC ordinance, which gives the height, and it's true, Tracy, they could have a much wider sign. They could have more lettuce space. But it still troubles me that we're approving something twice as tall. Even though it looks good, it seems to fit in. Is there no way that the sign could meet the current requirements of the Land Development Code with our new sign ordinance, with the EMC ordinance? Is there no way an 8-foot sign could work? I guess that's my...
I'm happy to try that, Mr. McGinnis. The answer that I would give you is, in this particular... I can't tell you across the board because I just don't know. I don't know whether you need to go back and change your code or not. That's a decision that I think you and the City Commission need to wrestle with. I can tell you, in this situation, the professionals that we consulted, the documents that I looked at of outside professionals, tell me this sign needed to be higher than 8 feet, at least certainly at its top. It needed to be 7 to 8 feet at its bottom, where the beginning of the text is, to be safe in this type of location with this wide of a road, with this type of speed limit. Proportional, the question about proportionality, you know, the sign is less than half, the electronic portion, less than half than how... As big as it could be, area-wise. I think if you made it real short and tried to even leave it half, it's still going to look real wide and short. And I think if I showed you a picture of it, you'd think it would look silly. It's really a pretty subjective thing. How's it look to you? This is the question that comes up in sign reviews all the time. How's it look? And I'm sorry that that sounds like it's a simplistic way of looking at it, but that's very common. It's aesthetically driven, in large part, and safety, and I think I've addressed the safety part for you.
So you don't think a 12-foot sign could work?
Don't think so. Because a 12-foot sign, if it started at 8 feet, would be 4 feet high, 4 feet of copy area. It's just not going to get it. It's just going to be squatty and wide.
What's your elevation at that point?
The engineer can tell you, but I think the base... There's a little bit of a hill there. It's about 4 feet above the crown of the road, I think. Am I right, guys? Just give me a thumbs up. I think the base of the sign, the ground level at that area is about 4 feet above the crown of the road.
So if that's 4 feet and we needed...
8 feet. It's also set back pretty far. Larry, if you look at the survey... If you want to put this camera back on for a second, I can show you something. You've got to look at all the circumstances of the situation. In this situation, this old road that used to come down through here, the name of it is Lake Shore Drive. The right-of-way comes, cuts around like this. And so we've got this big dead area out there. And, you know, that creates another situation. Do you need to be a little bigger because you're a little further away? When you read those documents, and I read quite a bit of them, unfortunately for me, it talks about things like that. How far back is it? Is it a corner? What's the radius of the corner? You know, how fast are the people going? And all those things are taken into consideration, and our sign guy, if you want to hear all of his explanation for it, used all those things to come to a window, and the top of the window is 19 and 1/2 feet. If you want to hear from him, I'm sure he'd be happy to talk to you about that.
And just an answer to Mr. Nicholson, one thing I asked staff is about moving this sign forward. Not only is the right-of-way where it is, but there's a lift station, there are utilities, it can't. It has to be where it is. It cannot come any closer to the road because I actually would like to see a little lower, closer to the road. But, you know, I would have liked to have seen all those little low bushes go and put it there, but it's not feasible. I will say, the one thing I'm a little uncomfortable with, even putting it into the... I'd like some help on how it would need to be worded. This idea that we're planting more, I mean, I really love this look of how full and how landscaped it is behind... If we were reproducing that behind the sign, whatever that... I mean, I don't want to end up with 1-foot-tall box... And I'm not saying we will, but I just want to be really clear that if this is approved and this language is added, what the language needs to be to make sure the landscaping reflects what it needs to reflect and to make sure...
I don't think we're going to get there tonight. Our code requires that a landscape plan comes into a signed and sealed design by a landscape architect.
That's what I was wondering.
And this is not... I'm sorry, Tracy, that you raised a good question, but this is not the best place for us to hash it out just because it's not normally done in this context.
Right.
I'm happy to say for you, though, that it helps you to understand that what we're prepared to do is, if you want to do a type-for-type comparison as well as a number, a quantitative comparison, I can tell you that we're going to give you the amount of both, at least, if not more. And it's going to go through an approval with the staff, looking at the landscape.
Can that happen? It doesn't have to come back here? That's what I'm asking.
No, this isn't a site plan that comes back to the planning board.
If that's your approval, that would be fine.
No, it's going to be binding on us, but normally that wouldn't happen.
The issue is really the design by the LA that would say that they're not too close, that it's healthy, that the sizes, the numbers, etc. I mean, you could go caliper inch for caliper inch.
Right.
There's a lot of ways to do it.
But would that happen after this?
Would have to.
Okay. But they don't have to come back for that because of the comprehensive... That's what I'm asking. That doesn't need to be part of the...
You could approve it, subject to that, sure.
Okay. That's what I'm asking. And subject to that, what is that called?
I think what you're saying is you would want to approve this subject to the applicant providing replacement landscaping...
According to...
In like-kind and of the same size of the landscaping, being removed as shown on the plan or in some equivalent form approved by staff.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
And I would suggest...
And we would stipulate that.
...submitted and sealed by a landscape architect.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Actually, I kind of agree with John, Mr. Nicholson, really about the fact that it probably would be nicer, and of course, you know I would be prejudiced to this, that we don't use the palm trees behind it with the poles. I think he's right. I think he's right. My daughter has always described them as simply as telephone poles with some leaves on top. Actually, I think it'd be much nicer to have something behind it that gave a canopy behind it rather than these poles sitting behind. So number one, I do think that. Number two, actually, I wish that is on a little, as he said, 4-foot rise. So we do get some of that in our sign, even though... And actually, I consider the bottom part of this sign as advertising. I mean, I don't know what that accomplishes. I think I would rather see the sign wider and lower than I'm seeing the sign here because I think the whole bottom part of the sign is really advertising. That doesn't accomplish anything about letting...
We're selling this.
Simply letting people know that the hospital is there. And that was why we wanted to put the sign there, because we want people coming down that road now to know that the hospital is there.
Yeah, but they could be, not like advertising, but announcing, like it could be national, you know, like we just had...
Breast cancer.
Breast cancer awareness. They're having a blood pressure clinic. They're having, you know, a walk-in dermatologist thing today.
You can justify anything, though.
It would be all the services that the hospital would be offering and would want to get the message out is the reason I would see for them having a message board to start with, to get the message out from the hospital. They're not going to say, you know, come in and get two-for-one tonsil removal.
Well, they might. They might. I think we're closer to that now.
You know, they could be having a blood drive. They could be screening for diabetes. You know, any of the services that would be afforded with the hospital to get their message out, to maybe get some people in, would be my opinion.
Well, Mr. Always-Messane, with a wider sign, they could still do this, but you have a lower sign.
I have a question. Real simple. Has it been decided which one of these is going to be used, whether Halifax Health is going to go on top or on bottom?
What you see is what you get.
Well, in one place, it's on top, and another place, it's on bottom.
Let me grab mine a second.
That's why I'm asking. We've got two different... Yes.
Oh. Inside...
On page 3, at the beginning of the staff report, Halifax Health is on the top. And then when you go into the report... Wait, wait. When you go into the report...
Ah, you're right.
On page 9, Halifax Health is on the bottom. And I didn't know if... I wanted to know exactly which was being used.
She's right. Yeah.
Good eye.
What happened was, yeah, if you look on page 11, I'm sorry, page 15, that's the one everybody's been focused on. That's the page that it refers to, and it says we can have one EMC sign. But this other one, you know, sign guy, you want to speak to that? Is it just the type?
That was the original version.
And it got into the staff report, but I think the... Don't you guys have one that replaced that one as well? Great catch, Kathy. The page that's correct is the last page that I was referring to, page 15.
Okay.
And that's the one that's in the staff report. This one was just an exhibit that was intended to show the sign that was being replaced versus the sign that's going to be there in terms of size, and ended up having the old flipped sign.
Well, I noticed the measurements, and I said, well, maybe this is done so that we can see the measurements. But then, in listening and in reading the information, I'm thinking, if the sign is lower and the verbiage is at the bottom, we may miss it. When you're riding along the road using this one.
Right.
So...
Well...
Since this is the one, I feel that...
So you like the one with the change copy on top better?
On the top.
Yeah, to be honest with you, I don't know how... There was some flip-flopping, as you could tell from the exhibit, between those two. And I don't know how they ended up with the other.
To me, I love what you were talking about. That would certainly...
Well, of course you... The bottom line is you want to see both things. You want to know it's, it's Halifax Health. Yeah.
Do you have to come up?
Come on up, identify yourself real quick for us. Since you talked about it.
Yeah, you need to put your name on the record too.
Oh, okay. Jason Davis from Don Bell Signs. Um, I think what the intention was on that is, you know, it was just an original version that our artist did. And then after some, you know, going back and forth, we determined that it was probably more important for the identity of a hospital to be on top. You know, it was more important so that it could get the awareness out there that that's a hospital and then any kind of messages would be secondary underneath.
Makes sense.
What, what I would certainly say for the record is that, uh, before we get this to the commission, it would have the, the right sign on page nine, the same as on page fifteen. Thanks Kathy.
Do we have any more comments, Mr.?
Kevin is.
I guess, I'm just kind of where Mr. Hortman's coming from. The purpose was for people to see and know about the hospital. And I'm not so sure, even with the, the, uh, the nineteen-foot sign. I mean, I'm just thinking if you're driving down the road, uh, if this really meets the purpose here. Because if you're ever from out of town, I mean, I notice here it says world-class care where you live, right where you live. But a lot of people, you know, people that visit Daytona, don't live here. And I was kind of jokingly saying, one of the meetings, like, some people think that hospital is a resort when they drive by. So you could easily get on the hospital, you see palm trees in this building. It does not look like a hospital where I'm from. So that is, um, one of my concerns. And then also where Mr. McGinnis is coming from. We approved item four, uh, approved item four, and you said, you said, hey, you know, you can approve the sign plan, you can approve this tool for planning.
Right.
And basically vote however you want on it, the modifications. And I think, I think that's the, the fairest way to do it, I guess you would say. So that's what I'm going to do. That's why I voted for item four. But on this, I'm voting against it.
What would you like us to do with the sign, Kathy?
Well...
Because it can be eight feet tall and forty feet wide. I mean, that's, that's not what we wanted to do, so we thought we brought you a better product.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't like, I don't like the eleven-foot exception, eleven and a half, whatever it is. For some reason, if there's some way we can make it lower, I like making it wider or whichever, but, um, I like the hospital. I do. I mean, it has nothing to do against the hospital, just, I just don't see, and then the palm trees, like you said, going in the back. And I don't, I'm not convinced, guys.
Well, one of the, one of the things that I, I may have rushed through and I apologize was, and the most important pictures are the ones that I talked about being the sniff test, if you will. When you look at it, do you think it fits? And, and when I was showing you the slideshow, it's these pictures here. And, uh...
Yeah, well, I just want to see what page you, okay.
That's what we're talking about. And if I made it half that height, I don't, I don't think it would, I think it would look like, is this really a hospital? You know? They certainly aren't trying to identify themselves very well.
Could I point out a comparison? I asked Dennis to do this this afternoon. I mean, not specifically, but he was going out to lunch and I said, could you find this out? The Kmart sign, which is right on the other side of this intersection that we're talking about for the shopping center, is approximately twenty feet wide by approximately thirty-two feet high. Okay? So we're talking about something that's twelve feet lower. Granted, it's on a grade, actually, I got about three and a half feet when I measured out there, but it's on a grade. So it's still even lower than the Kmart sign, which is literally right across the street. Okay? And it's actually within visual look, just about the same width. And, you know, I wanted to have something, when I was trying to figure this out, what do I see when I'm out there? And, I mean, for me, I, I just don't find this height objectionable with what's out, where we're looking at this intersection, with what you see, with what's going to, what you're trying to see, what's competing for your interest as a driver. I, I think this is, um, actually perfect for that corner. Um, I agree, I find listening to, um, and then I actually even drove further out, US 92, some other monument signs, when you look at like where the Family Christian store is and Verizon, there are these two monument signs, just before you get to Target. They're on a grade that's about nine feet above the street level. And when you add how high those signs are, even at the nine feet, again, you're looking at something that's thirty feet above where you see. They're not as wide as we're talking here. Those are much smaller. They're about maybe twelve feet wide. But it's what you see when you drive. But I, I do agree, I'm, I mean, yeah, you want to relocate the palms. I do agree with Mr. Hoytma. I would rather see something that gives a tree can, when I, when I look at like that first picture, I just don't want to see all that again. I would much rather see, the oaks out there are beautiful. I think the palms, yes, they're tropical, it's Florida. But I'd rather not see fourteen of them just moved. I'd rather see something a lot more interesting done that would create a tree canopy behind this. Incorporate the palms for sure, but I, and I agree with Mr. Nicholson on that. I just don't want to see a bunch of brown poles behind this sign.
There are some cities that have outlawed sable palm trees. Bob, Bob, you, you know, if you live in Palm Beach, brother, they love you. But, but I, I have to say, I, you know, at, at some point, you know, the canopy trees, you can only put so many in because they get so wide.
Right. That's what I'm saying. I'd rather see a mixture. I just don't want to see you move fourteen palms, clump them behind the sign and go, well, we're, we've done it.
Yeah, for what it's worth, I, I think what's out there now is, is just a mishmash of, you know, the city's got their bushes that overgrew in the right-of-way, and then we've got the palm trees that are blocking the sign anyway. And it needs to be redone. That's why I sat Paul down and said, let's get a nice landscape plan. Well, it's typically not something, unless it's a giant building that has landscaping in front of them, that comes in front of the planning board. So I'm bringing it to you just so you have a vision of it. Um, but we will be going back to staff. We do now, hopefully, your motion will have a stipulation about what I've already said I would do, which is replace at least in kind what's there behind the sign. If you want to say with more hardwoods than palm trees, you know, I, I can live with that. But the problem you run into is trying to make sure they fit.
Right.
Like Paul, I mean, it...
Yeah.
Because I said I would put at least as many in number, and that's what Ben said too. So I, I want to make sure I can do what I, what I said I would do.
I have a comment. I, I agree with Tracy. You know, scale is going to be everything on this corner. To me, this is a completely different animal than the race, the dog track sign, which is an entirely different type of stretch of road. It's an entirely different type of business. Scale is everything here. And like she said, you've got a lot of competition in there. You've got a shopping center, you've got a bank, you've got five lanes of traffic. I mean, there's a lot going on and it has to have some stature to have some meaning. We don't want to put in there the equivalent of putting an average-sized, sized stop sign at the speedway, at the track. I mean, can you imagine that? We don't want that, that equivalent. We want something that has some presence. And the reason why we, we strove to make our ordinances so strict is that when you do have something like this, you really got to jump through the hoops. We really got to talk about it. We really have to think about what do we want? And this is, this is a product of that. This is a good thing. But we, we have to have the appropriate scale. I, I agree, I think there is some issues here with the landscaping, but honestly, there isn't an area at the hospital that, that I don't think, you know, as far as landscaping goes.
Could you do something?
Yeah, it, it always looks fantastic, most of, most of the places. So the, the landscape to me is secondary. We'll, we'll hammer out something that looks really nice. Um, I agree that the picket fence palm tree thing really would not, is not my cup of tea. That, to me, is secondary. We really have to focus on the scale and the size of this for the appropriate area. And the appropriate, you know, it's a hospital. It needs to have some presence. It can't be too small.
Your pictures really help.
Yeah, I was going to...
Just making the point here, I don't think we're arguing about the sign shouldn't be bigger. You know, I don't have a problem with a big sign. I just don't want it to be as tall. So I don't mind if it gets a little bigger this way. That's not a problem.
That's what I'm saying.
You know, I'm just having my problem with being narrow and tall.
Well, it's thirty-five feet now.
I'm sorry?
It's thirty-five feet now.
It's not electronic.
That's coming down.
It's not electronic.
No, I understand.
But I mean, the electronic thing, we sort of losing the perspective. Uh, I, I think that, do you want to make it really short so it has no stature, as you said? Just because it's got an electronic message? Because they got the convenience of being able to change the message? I think we're kind of losing the message by doing that. The other message, which is what we're trying to accomplish.
Not only that, when you take into consideration, as Janet said, it's a hospital. If you have individuals, tourists, looking for the hospital and you can't see the, the sign riding along the street, you've lost your purpose.
It's a life-saving issue.
You need to be able to read the sign and you're going forty-five, fifty, fifty-five miles an hour. It doesn't make sense to have a sign that you, that's not readable.
I, I guess, I just think this sign, this proposed sign, I still think you'll be right up on it before you really see it, I think.
But to make it smaller, it won't help.
Well...
Kevin, if you especially look at the ones that are pulled back a little further, for instance, the last page, it says eastbound A on it. You can imagine if you, if you reduce that sign by even three or four feet, it's going to, it's going to kind of disappear. Especially as you're coming by Kmart with all that stuff, there's a bank right there that's got a sign right up front. I mean, again, we're talking about maybe somebody trying to figure out how to get to the ER.
Well, that's what I was going to say. You have lost your emergency room entryway.
Yeah.
I mean, I know it's free speech and all that kind of stuff and we can't really tell you what you can put on it, but I do think to have this sign there and not have emergency on it like we have on the pole sign, I think we...
Well, I guess the emergency would flash on the electronic place. If you drive by every...
Along with breast cancer month. I, I think that, I, I would just say, I think emergency needs to be a permanent part...
You've got, you've got a good point.
Of there. I mean, it's just as we're talking here, it's like...
Isn't there a hospital, a city hospital sign, emergency on that corner anywhere?
No, it just says hospital, turn right.
Tracy's looking at the sign.
But I'm looking at the pole sign, which Kathy and Kevin were just talking about, and we, we actually have lost emergency on your main drag for...
Well, see, once you turn the corner though, around to Clyde Morris, there, there's other signs that will be directing you. They don't want you to pull into that first parking lot where the oncology center is and think it's emergency.
Exactly, but so...
That's just to get them off ISB though, Tracy's saying, I think she's right.
But that's what I'm saying. If I'm going down ISB, yeah, I see a sign. I don't have, you know, when you look at the pole sign, even though you can't see it going east, but if I were coming west, there's an arrow that's telling me do this. It's gone. I have no way if I'm on the main, one of the main streets in the city, where's the emergency room?
Tracy, it seems to me like there are two ways we can address it. One, make the static portion of the sign included, or have it be a, a constant portion of the electronic component.
Yeah, there, I mean, what, I do think it's...
In either event, if you were, if you were to make that a condition of your approval, I think it's a very valid point.
Well, no, I can't because I have legal people telling me it's First Amendment.
Even, even emergency, then life safety?
Yeah. Or is it required on a hospital sign, an emergency something?
If the applicant wants to, you know, volunteer that that's going to be done, then we're not dictating content.
Yeah, let me say, let me say this Tracy, um, I, I'll go back to the hospital and we'll, we'll talk through that. I think that they're going to...
Figure out it should be there?
Yeah, I'm, I'm standing here agreeing with you personally, but I, I can't tell you for sure institutionally. But I think, I'm pretty certain that, that that's something that needs to be a component of this sign.
Yeah, because we can't dictate content.
You have a good point though, because the last thing you want to do was, when you're in a panic with a kid with a busted leg or whatever, that you're taking to the hospital yourself is go sailing through that intersection.
Going, where's the emergency room?
Exactly. And if you've got the big red arrow or whatever they're going, they could put on there like they have now.
In their defense, they, they may have thought through, okay, it says hospital, so they at least are going to make the turn to go to the hospital. Then they see the one you're talking about, that's two, two or three, um, driveways down. That is a pretty good-sized sign that says emergency.
Right, but I, I do agree with her.
Yeah.
You know, the next thing you know, they're in the parking lot of DBCC, so where's the ER? You know? So you don't want to miss that turn going east.
Yeah, that's, that to me is critical.
But I think maybe part of it is the, the font on Halifax Health is smaller than the font on the electronic message, message.
Well, the font's changeable, of course, on the EMC part of it.
I mean, it doesn't say, it says medical center. It doesn't say hospital. But I, I thought that, I really thought there were those round H signs in that area.
There's a, there's a blue sign.
Those are state signs.
One blue sign that if you actually go where that blue sign is, you're going to be turning in between the college and before you get to this corner.
It's the road behind the hospital.
You'll turn in behind the hospital. There's one little blue sign.
That's a DOT sign, I think.
Yeah. And that's a...
We had one member in the audience that I didn't call that wanted to speak, Mr. John Henry Nguyen.
My name's John Nguyen, uh, 280 Brayburn Circle. I haven't been here in a long time, but, uh, this situation here, I'm here for another agenda. But as far as the sign, I'm getting up there in age. And if I'm going down Clyde Morris, second speed limit of fifty-five, I want to know where that hospital's at. I used to work at that hospital in nineteen seventy. I've been in the medical field thirty-nine years. We, we address the travel industry and the people from out of town. I own three travel agencies presently. And to make a long story short, I've been all over the United States and the world. To make that short, we've got small signs all over this Bluge County area. Let's get a big one, that way people know where it is, and let's get this part done. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, then more comments from the board. We ready for a motion? Tracy, I think everyone's worked that.
Uh, motion to approve comprehensive sign plan modification, Halifax Hospital, DEV, two thousand and ten dash oh seven oh, to include, let me wait a minute. To include a stipulation that there will be a relocation, possible relocation of the fence, replacement landscaping and a mix of hardwood and palm, approved by staff, submitted and with a submission and sealed by a landscape architect plan for the corner of Clyde Morris in US 92 with the new electronic message center sign.
Second. We have a motion and a second. That passes muster as far as the motion's concerned.
Does that work? A new landscape?
I think I understood what you were saying and it was clear.
Okay. All in favor? I'm sorry. Do you have a comment?
Do you need to change?
Uh, do we need to include anything with the language of flipping the sign that's currently in the CSP that they have submitted that before it gets to the commission?
Well, he actually already said that they're going to change that before it gets to the commission, so it reflects...
What's proper there.
Right, what's proper.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Roll call vote?
Miss Rehmart?
Yes.
Mr. Hoytma?
No.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mrs. Sage?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Fishback?
No.
Mr. Bohan?
Yes.
Ms. Washington, yes. Mr. McGinnis?
No.
We needed six.
Just made it. Just made it.
All right. Passes.
Thanks very much for your time.
Unfortunately, item number six.
Item number six, preliminary plat, Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University Technology Park, DEV, two thousand and eleven dash zero six seven.
Uh, thank you. Dennis Merzak, planner with the City of Daytona Beach. Uh, the next item, number six, is a request by Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University for approval of a preliminary plat of seventy-seven point five seven acres of land to allow for the development of an aeronautical and aerospace research and development industrial park. Uh, the PMD was originally approved in June two thousand and eight and the timetable for development was extended in June of two thousand and eleven. Uh, the current location or the vocation of the, um, the Embry-Riddle... The current location, or the vocation of the Emory Riddle Tech Park, would be just east of Clyde Morris Boulevard, north of Bevel, and south of Bellevue. Regarding preliminary plats, the purpose of a subdivision plating requirements is detailed in Article Four, Section 4.1, to ensure that adequate infrastructure is installed and available for development to prevent hazards due to traffic, flooding, unsanitary conditions, and other causes. Permit development in an orderly physical pattern and prevent undue burdens of cost to the public. Preliminary plat plans must be approved by the planning board as well as the city commission. The final plat needs approval of the city commission only. As determined by the staff, a technical review team, the proposed preliminary plat is in compliance with the subdivision requirements of the Land Development Code. Staff does recommend approval of the preliminary plat request. The item is tentatively scheduled to be heard before the December 7, 2011 city commission meeting. A majority vote of the members present and voting is required for action. Thank you.
Okay, any questions, staff? I had Mr. Schallus was going to be presenting, as someone else is speaking.
Good evening, I'm James Dowers with Cobb Cole. As you mentioned, Chris Schallus was unable to be here this evening, so he asked that I come and present this item. We have Bobby Ball with Zev Kona Associates and Chris Hardisty with Emory Riddle University here this evening. Happy to answer any questions, but this has been supported by staff, and so I really don't have anything this evening.
All right. I see we have no speakers from the audience. Board?
Make a motion, we approve preliminary plat development 2011-67, Emory Riddle Aeronautical University Technology Park.
Second.
We have a motion? Wait till Ms. Washington gets back, or have you...
Oh, I didn't see...
She's gone right now.
Okay.
We can talk about it. This is really going to be something for our community. And all of the satellite things, not just this research park, but it's going to bring all of these other little satellite things into our area, and, you know, just like they're talking about, Emory Riddle being with the new air traffic control out at the airport, that they're one of three in the nation that have that equipment and are developing equipment at our airport because of Emory Riddle. And I'll proudly, again, say that Mr. Riddle's from my hometown.
You're going to put that on your tombstone, right?
We're all proud of him. We've got a big, big plaque, it's in Pikeville, Kentucky, and it recognizes him and all the stuff that he did.
Oh, my goodness.
What part of Kentucky was it?
Pikeville, Kentucky.
Pike?
This is an excellent project.
What's that close to?
Nothing.
Nothing. Well, he wasn't even from Pikeville, he was from Marvone, but Pike was the biggest town close to where he was from. His sister was our county reporter for thirty years.
Are you ready to vote now?
No.
No, we did, we held the vote.
We held the vote.
We honestly did. So we have a motion and a second?
Thank you very much.
On the Emory Riddle, item number six.
And who made the motion?
Mr. Hurt?
Mr. Hurt.
Seconded by Ms. Remark?
All right, I'm ready.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item number seven? Ms. Washington?
Item number seven, rezoning, planned commercial development, Daytona Beach Seventh Day Adventist Church, DEV 2011-013.
Mr. Merzak?
Thank you, again, Dennis Merzak, planner with the City of Daytona Beach. The next item is a request to rezone ten point two-two acres of land located at 401 North Williamson Boulevard from RP Residential Professional to PCD Planned Commercial Development. Now, this would be allowing temporary overnight parking of recreational vehicles as a conditional use. The location of the subject property is at 401 North Williamson Boulevard, that's just north of Bayless Boulevard. The current feature land use is office transition, and the current zoning is RP Residential Professional. The request is to modify the zoning to PCD. That would allow for the temporary RV, RV storage use. I went out there, I took a couple of pictures. Got to include here the entrance of the property for the church, the main structure for the church, and in the back of the site is the area where they would be housing the overnight accommodations for the recreational vehicles. This proposal is to allow all, excuse me, this proposal is to allow all uses currently allowed in the RP zoning district in addition to the use of the temporary overnight RV parking. Proposed rezoning to the PCD will include the existing RP uses, allows overnight RV parking as a conditional use, and that's a use that's very similar in the industrial zoning districts, with the exception of M5. The new use must meet conditional use requirements for temporary overnight RV parking as stated in the Land Development Code. Some of those conditions include a thirty-day maximum per calendar year. The applicant must obtain all required permits, local and state. There must be twenty-four-hour security on-site, and they must provide solid waste pickup areas. To give you a little idea, I've got a site plan up there, I wanted to show you where the, kind of give you an idea of where the location of some of these are. Get you a little overview. This would be Williamson over there on the left-hand side, and then you'd be able to enter into the, to the facility. And then the temporary RV storage, overnight accommodations, I should say, located in the back in the open field. The field is already cleared, and it's ready to go for this type of use. Going through this, staff does have additional staff conditions for approval, and they've been provided for in your staff report, I just wanted to go through them again right here. Zoning and fire would be required to do inspections prior to each event. Backflow prevention devices would be required to be installed. And the applicant is to provide portable toilet facilities for the patrons and pump-out services for recreational vehicles. This is to be serviced on a daily basis, and the quantity and location must be approved by the city prior to the temporary use permit approval. As far as the recommendations, staff recommends approval with conditions, the conditions attached. To rezone the ten point two-two acres parcel of land located at 401 North Williamson from RP Residential Professional to PCD Planned Commercial Development, allowing this temporary overnight parking of recreational vehicles. The rezoning request is tentatively scheduled to be heard by the city commission on December 7th, December 7, 2011, and December 21, 2011 for second reading and a public hearing. An affirmative vote of six is required to recommend approval to the city commission. Thank you.
All right. Any questions, staff?
Yeah, I have one question. Are there any, are there any uses that can go into a PCD that we can't live with just because we've made it into an area that they can use parking? Is there anything that would not be compatible with the area that it's in that would be, that actually would be allowed in a PCD?
Are you speaking in this PCD?
This PCD.
We'd have to, we'd have to spell it out in the development agreement, that any type of use would have to be in that development agreement, so to get that approval...
Any uses in there, actually, would they affect other things around it? Would that be a negative?
Other than the RP uses or the temporary overnight RV parking?
No, the change from where it is to a PCD. And it was what I'm asking now. Actually, some things are allowed now in the zone that they're in now that would not be allowed in the PCD now, right?
Well...
Well, the parking being one right off the bat.
Yeah, it would just be the RVs. So, the way it's set up is anything that the RP zoning would allow, that use would be allowed within this parcel.
As permitted uses.
As permitted uses, correct. In addition to this one particular conditional use for the temporary overnight RV parking. If they were to request maybe another use that wasn't in the RP zoning and wasn't this temporary use, they'd be required to come back before the planning board and the city commission for an amendment to their PD to allow that use.
Okay. All right.
Who here can present?
James Dowers, Cobb Cole, here on behalf of Seventh Day Adventist Church. Just to speak to the PCD request, it is extremely limited in scope. It is simply for the opportunity to seek a conditional use for RV overnight parking. And so, and all it is, is an opportunity. So they'll still, the church will still have to go through that entire conditional use process, but this is RP uses, which they're currently able to have on the site, and then just adding the one use. So that, it's a somewhat unique PCD in that it is extremely limited in terms of the scope. So, and we have Mark Douse here tonight to answer any questions, the project engineer, and happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
I realize that this is a, you know, is allowing them to profit off of the influx of tourism that we have, especially at race week, and it allows them thirty days to do things like Churchy Fest if they wanted to have some kind of church organization, you know, from other areas to come and visit. But does it allow things like, you know, campfires? I mean, this is not an RV park. I realize they have to get, it says, security and lighting and whatnot, but are they allowed to do campfires? Just curious. Who would govern that?
Well, it would depend, they're permitted to do whatever the conditional use would allow them to do. So I presume...
That's what I want to know specifically, because it's a real risk. I'm not against it, I love a campfire. However, you know, we don't need a, you know, wildfire that wasn't...
I agree, and I will say that the fire department is required to go over there and do an inspection of the property beforehand, and if, and if the situation called for, the fire department could have them not have any type of campfires, depending on the conditions, surrounding conditions, or they may say, "You're good to go if you provide certain requirements."
So, but who's going to, who's going to trigger that? Who is going to be responsible for that happening?
For the inspection?
Yes.
The fire department is, will go, the fire department goes out there and does that inspection?
Listen, explain to her every year.
So, they don't have the same issue?
Oh, every year.
Why don't you explain that?
Every time they use it.
Every time they go through this process for the temporary use, they're required to come through and go through that same process for approval.
I understand now, thank you.
And the process requires that they get all the permits, including the fire department's.
Yeah. It's just not the same type of thing as an RV park or KOA. I mean, that is governed under different things, and, you know, there's strict rules and regulations and...
This is true, and we do have, we do have a couple of facilities in that general area that are zoned in the M4 zoning that do this every year. They do apply for the permits, they do go through, they get their full permitting process. Zoning goes out there, does the inspection, the fire department goes out there, they do the inspection, and it's been a system that's been working pretty well for a few years now.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
We're fine.
I have some questions for Mr. Dowers. This would be open to the public? And they could charge a fee?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay, does the church currently charge for parking during races out there now?
I've got, is Mike McMaster?
I know a lot of places on...
There's someone with the church here who can answer some questions.
He can do it after you've talked about it.
Yeah, just give your name.
Michael McMaster, for the Daytona Beach Seventh Day Adventist Church. We would be only charging for donations, is all.
But I mean, do you currently do that now? For the races? Do you have parking out there like several other businesses do?
Only thing we've ever done is in our own parking lot, as a day thing, and then if somebody came in, wanted to park there, we say, "You can park here for a donation."
Right, so you currently do race parking now?
Only on occasion, but we always go and go through the permitting process and everything.
I wanted to...
It's not every year, but on occasion we have, yes.
All right.
Any other questions?
No questions, comments.
All right. Board? Motion we approve?
Wait, wait.
Just a second.
No, I have lots of comments.
I thought you said, "Did you have any questions?"
No, questions, yes, the comments.
Oh, I forgot that part.
Yeah, we forgot.
I have comments.
I must have lost my head. You're not going to see the first one.
Agreed.
I couldn't stand that agreement.
I'm going to do my comments first, they'll be briefer. The church is currently a permitted use in the RP zoning. If we take a look at the zoning map, you see the RP zoning is sitting right next to the M1 zoning, and right on the other side of the RP zoning is the R1A zoning. Now, the zoning scheme in the city was to put RP zoning, residential professional, as a buffer zone between higher-intensity industrial, commercial, or business uses to protect the residential properties. Now, we have the highest-zoned residential properties, R1A zoning, directly across Williamson. So, in this case, we have the entire strip of Williamson zoned RP, and the RP zoning is properly buffering and protecting the R1A zoning from the higher-intensity M4 zoning to allow any break in the RP zoning, especially, there are conditional and special uses that can be put into the RP zoning, which are in the current Land Development Code. The permitted, the special, and the conditional. The particular use here, the overnight parking, is not something that's permitted under conditional or special, so it has to come in as a PCD. But as a PCD, this type of use, this overnight parking of the RVs, which is ordinarily in the M4 zone, is now coming into the RP zone, and it is contrary to the purpose of the RP zone. And although it's a limited time during the year, it's, I think, a violation of our zoning scheme. And I would oppose any type of spot zoning, especially like this, in the RP buffer zone.
Are you done?
Yes.
Oh, more, okay. Actually, and I would say, it's not only, I agree with everything that Mr. McGinnis just said, but I don't think that this proposed use is consistent with the comp plan. Not only does it go against what the RP zoning is supposed to accomplish, the comp plan in this neighborhood, which we happen to have in Agenda Item Number Nine, the neighborhood P, the policy, the lands between the industrial park, M4, and Williamson Boulevard should serve to provide a puffer to the indigo residential area. Then it says, "The policy is the area to the east of Williamson Boulevard, north of International Speedway, and south of Mason shall be preserved for a variety of multifamily, professional office, and light industrial uses." And I agree with what Ms. LaSage was saying, a campground is not a light industrial use. Not only that, this is a ten-acre campground. There's a lot of RVs. I don't know if any of you have ever gone on Fintris right through M4 where this is allowed. This is a lot. This is big, it's noisy, there's nothing controlling how late people are out partying, there's nothing controlling, other than the fire department deciding, "Well, we can't have a campfire now in July because it's too, you know, we're going to burn down the city, but we can do it in February." This is, this is huge. The, also, besides not being consistent with the neighborhood policy, I really don't think it is, the staff report, I don't know who measured how far this is from the major sports district boundary. I did it three times, I got a mile and a little over. If you go to where the sports district boundary is on the other side of US 92 and you drive down here, I hit my little speedometer, I got just over a mile. I don't know if you do it as the crow flies, but if you follow Williamson, you do a straight line, well, if you, I'm not a crow, I get there in a car. I think that's an interpretation, because the interpretation any right-minded person would travel is just a little over a mile, which to me does not meet the conditional use. I think when the commission did this in 2000, allowing this, they kept this very narrow and constrained for a reason in industrial zoning. The other thing, Mr. Hoytma talked about... The other thing, Mr. Hoytma talked about, the impact of this, possible negative impact on, on other properties. Just a little bit, I think it's like two addresses north of this, is the Indigo Rehab Center. It's a nursing home and rehab center with an Alzheimer unit. Just beyond that is the Indigo Pines condo. I actually had looked at one point at buying out there, the, the, as soon as you go out on the balcony during anything, speed weeks alone, you're gonna be assaulted by noise. So now we're putting this, just two away. I don't think it fits with the uses that are out there. Plus, okay, let's come a little closer, instead of as the crow flies, let's say that we really are within a mile, the way you might drive there, 329 Williamson, Christ Community Church, 4.29 acres, all you need is three and a half. They could come forward next month, and they could want to do the same thing. And now, our spot zoning is changing the other zoning that's out there. Apco is just a little over three and a half acres, they're at 321. So how far is this little PCD, temporary 30 days a year, gonna go? And what's it gonna do to not only Indigo, but actually all the other RP zoning that's out there, and people that have already built, that have already invested, that have already planned, and expect a certain type of zoning around them? I, I just think that this is absolutely the wrong thing to do. I, I'm not gonna support it. I hope that there's not support for it on this. And I, I really do think that if we're measuring, we should actually measure, not just how birds get around, but you need to measure how you get from one boundary to another. Nothing against what you did.
In, in that case, if the road does close, then you start changing the parameters of how close something could be, because you can't get there by the car. Typically, we do the, the proximity as the crow flies, and when we look at a lot of different things, when we're looking at, when we're going through social services, when we're looking at proximities, it's, it's by the, by the crow, we have our maps, and we put it out there and measure it out, so.
But I just don't think that's workable for here. And it is an interpretation, and I understand why you do it, but I would say that this should have been interpreted another way. So.
Any other comments?
I can appreciate them wanting to get a piece of the pie, because it's there, they'll fill up, they'll have RVs, I mean, it will be used. But with that being said, you know, it is totally inappropriate to do this to the people that bought a house in Indigo Lakes expecting a certain level of residential living, 365, not exempting one or two weeks out of the year, because it's a special event. I live next door to a church that probably makes $20,000 at Bike Week, Biketoberfest, if not more, for parking. I'm tolerant of it, 'cause it was there before me. And that's just parking. I know what it's like to live next door to the party, and it is an impact. It does impact, and that's just car parking. It's a whole different ballgame when you have people staying there overnight, in their RVs. It's going to impact the traffic, you're going to have a certain level of noise that's to be expected. Not everybody goes to bed at 10 o'clock, especially when they're there for a special event. I mean, God bless them, I think it's a great thing, I think it's one of the best attractions that we have here. But we can't let it dictate what happens to other people. I, I can totally support parking. I think that is appropriate, but RV, I mean, this is not a campground, this is a church parking lot. So that's my two cents on that.
Anyone else with comments? Mr. Stowers?
Thank you. I had a couple comments I'd like to make regarding some of the concerns. Regarding the RP, the strip of RP zoning between Williamson and the M4 on the other side of that, I would just like to say that the M4, I believe, can go through the conditional use process now. So that, those areas, all throughout that RP area, on the back portions of all those properties, including the Alzheimer's facility, they're actually adjoining to properties that can go through the same conditional use process that are even closer to, to that site. In terms of this particular property and the layout, this particular, the actual RV parking area, that's part of this, this site plan here, is in the center of the property. You're talking about 200 feet of undeveloped trees and landscaping foliage to the north and south of this, as well as to the back, which, the back is that M4 area that we talked about. Across Williamson, where Indigo Lakes is there, you've actually got, you know, I've got an aerial right here, I just wanted to show you, 'cause you were concerned about-
We have it.
We have it.
And so the, the impacts, when you talk about renting Williamson, the area behind this being where the RVs would potentially park overnight, provided they meet all the conditional use requirements, provided they secure that, which is all not guaranteed, would actually, Indigo Lakes would be buffered by not only the church, the frontage of the property, Williamson, then the area across here, and so you're talking about, I would say, judging by this, as the crow flies, a couple hundred feet. But the other thing, I was taking a look at the conditional use permit requirements for RVs, and you mentioned earlier how the, the code is, what your predecessors were thinking when they were putting things together. I noticed under, I believe it's Condition A, it says, "For conditional use permits, temporary overnight RV parking shall not occur on any lot or, or site which adjoins a residential use." And I underline "adjoin" because I think that, that is a part of, a join is to add or attach by joining. That is, it backs up to, it is a part of it. And your land development code doesn't define a join, it defines a but or adjacent property, which includes property that is across a right-of-way. I interpret that to mean that the conditional use permit requirements were drafted, contemplating properties that, if, for example, the M4 were actually residential, that yes, it would not permit, I'm going in, in terms of the conditional use here, would not permit a conditional use. But I believe it's, it's been drafted to allow and account for, okay, there's right-of-way across the street, there's this other area serving as a buffer, we'll consider this within the parameters of a conditional use. And so I, I didn't really want to get into that much detail, but when there were concerns about the residential aspect of this, I wanted to just share that, because I do think there are some distinctions made in the conditional use process that, that separate out properties where it would actually join. And, and this is a property, it's got RP to the north and south, it's got the M4 behind it, all of the properties along it, along the RP, they would adjoint, they do adjoint areas that are permitted, potentially, provided they meet all the other parameters, to get the conditional use permit for the temporary overnight parking. And so, you know, I, I just wanted to share some of those points, because I do think, you know, this is just an opportunity to go through a much more detailed process, through the conditional use process.
Okay. Just one thing, I just wanted to clear up. You're saying "adjoint" meaning contiguous to? And because Williamson is a street, it's different? Is that what I just heard you say?
Yes.
So we're talking, okay. Just for your information, for our land development code, we actually do, we use the word "abut" rather than "adjoint," which would be contiguous, a but or adjacent property.
I have that definition now.
Yes. Well, the right-of-way is included.
No, I, that's what I said.
Well, you said, I heard you say, adjoining, abutting, that means it's next to or adjacent. The right-of-way is included. So the right-of-way across from here is, makes this still adjoining or abutting property.
The point I was making is, "adjoint" is the language used-
Right.
-in the conditional use permit. The drafter of this document didn't write "but" or "adjacent property" in that language under the conditional use. My point was precisely that it doesn't use that language, which is a defined term, I agree with you.
I, I, I think you're doing what good lawyers do, is interpretation, but "adjoint" and "but," I'm sure we'd find are pretty darn close.
I think the other, the other thing to think about is that that particular provision refers to uses as opposed to districts.
Well, this is a conditional use.
Well, no, no, I think the point may have been, and I was on hand when that was drafted, was to, it certainly included the protection of properties which may have been non-conforming residential uses in, in or around M districts. So, I, I take, I take his point that, that the word that was used was "adjoint" instead of "adjacent" or "abutting," but I think the city would have latitude to interpret the word "adjoint" here, so.
All right. Are there any other comments? Ready for a motion?
Motion to, oh, did we have public? I'm sorry.
She used the term, Ms. Remark, 10 acres of usage. The, the church and the parking lot, and what we use it for normally, takes up most of that. I mean, this is a section that is less than five acres, maybe five acres, that is in the very far back of the property.
Probably just a little bit more than an acre, that's about it.
Yeah, it's, it's not a large amount, and so you're not gonna be able to get all those RVs on there. We're not gonna be able to get many on there. This is just a very small park.
I thought the RV park had to be three and a half acres.
Well, I think this is about five acres worth.
But Mr. Douse just said it's an acre.
The entire-
Shall not occur on any lot or site, which is less than three and a half acres. So the site on that lot is one acre. You don't meet the conditional use.
For the record, my name is Mark Douse, 536 North Halifax, we're the engineers for the site. And Tracy, of course, the whole site is greater than 10 acres. The whole site is greater than 10 acres. There's only a small portion in the back that's clear, and that's the cross-hatched area. And I don't have an exact acreage, but looking at the scale, it would appear to be about an acre, okay? On the north side, it has 200 feet of basically thick trees. So if you go out there, the only way you can see the site is to really enter on and get within the site. So while I might agree that in some cases, where you have RP zoning, you may not want this type of use, if you could have a condition whereby everyone who asks for it has 200 feet of thick vegetation around it, you'd probably be more comforted by that. I think the sighting, being on the inside, and the fact that there was no additional clearing required, I mean, they could have requested a larger area, but they didn't. They asked for a very small, specific use in the center, all buffered around, should, should weigh in your decision on whether or not to accept this as part of this property.
So is it your intent that the conditional use would only be available in what's currently the vacant part of the lot?
Only the cross, only the cross-hatched area that you see here, which is specifically defined in the center. And that's what gives you the 200-foot buffer to the north, 200 from the south, to the west, to the street is about 200, maybe slightly more. And then, of course, you have about 80 feet to the rear, but then again, on the rear, you're budding up to M4. So-
And of course, once you're a PCD, you could come back and ask for all of the parking area that's right next to Williamson, and yeah, you shake your head no, but-
Not without coming before this board.
Right, of course, coming before this board, yeah.
Yeah, I think we should be referring to this as a conditional use, it's a PCD, it's a rezoning.
To allow a conditional use that's not allowed in this zoning, period. This would not be allowed.
You can't legally adopt a PCD that incorporates not just permitted, but conditional uses. And we've done, the city's done that in the past, so.
Am I, am I correct that with this exhibit, that use is specifically limited to the area that we've shown on this drawing?
Yeah, I haven't had the opportunity to, to review the PCD agreement, but you're saying that's the intent.
That is the intent. And that's really the purpose of this exhibit, to, to show that. That the vegetation stays, the buffers stay, and it's a-
All right.
And certainly if the board was concerned about that, and that was what was stopping the board from moving to approve-
The person moving the approval could, could make those recommendations, make those stipulations part of the recommendation, that it be confined to the hatched area as shown in the packet, and that the landscape buffers, or the, the natural vegetation buffers would have to remain undisturbed.
Again, for now, until they come back and ask for a change. Uh-huh.
Of course, the rezoning makes the, a PCD makes, the rezoning makes this PCD the permitted use for this property.
The rezoning makes the PCD a permitted use, but, but they are not asking for the temporary RV parking to be a permitted use, they're asking for it to be a conditional use. So conditional uses in the land development code require, you know, their own separate approval. And for this particular conditional use, it requires it each, each time, it's a temporary conditional use.
But my, my point is, there's no conditional use allowed in the zoning as it is now, which is why they need to make it a PCD.
True. Absolutely.
So, and so in effect, what they're asking becomes the permitted use on this property, in addition to the church.
It becomes an additional conditional use, not permitted.
Okay.
And it's nuanced.
It becomes a use.
But conditional uses have-
It becomes an allowed use, whatever it's called, it's allowed.
If conditions are met, and if the procedure for conditional uses is followed.
All right. Any other comments? I think we're ready for a motion.
Motion to approve planned commercial development Daytona Beach Seventh Day Adventist Church, DEV 2011-013, including staff conditions of approval, as noted on the staff report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I'd like a roll call vote on this, if you could please.
Certainly.
Ms. Remark?
No.
Mr. Hoytma?
No.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Ms. LaSage? Mr. Moore? Mr. Neal? Mr. Fishback? Mr. Bohan?
Nope.
Ms. Washington, yes. Mr. McGinnis?
No.
It loses.
Is that two to eight?
Eight, uh-huh, two to eight.
Okay. All right. Are you all all right? You want to keep going, or you want to take a short break? Ready for number eight?
Can we take a break after this one?
After this one, we have a break.
Okay. Number eight?
Number eight. They said after this one. Rezoning, planned commercial development amendment, Daytona Beverage, DEV 2011-074.
Ready to go?
Yes, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Dennis Mosack, planner with the City of Daytona Beach, item number eight. This is a request to rezone 9.78 acres of land located to 2275 Mason Avenue in Daytona Beach, amending the existing planned commercial development, PCD, expanding the building square footage, and modifying the timetable for development. The property is located at 2275 Mason Avenue, which is, I've got it, got it up here on a map here for you. We've got Williamson over here, and then Mason, this is the point where Mason sneaks around and comes back further south. We have a number of, of industrial properties already under construction or completed in that area. The future line use of the area is general industrial, and the current zoning is PCD. I just wanted to back up a little bit over here, 'cause I wanted to give you some of the, some of the places that actually were operating over there. To the north of the site, we have Ploton Plastics; to the south, we have Continental Enterprises; to the west, we have Arc Technologies, which is currently under construction, should be completed soon; and to the east, we have Teledyne Oil and Gas. Okay. Daytona Beverage PCD, this was originally approved in 2004 as a two-phase development. The first phase included 12,000 square foot of office space- The first phase included 12,000 square foot of office space and 52,000 square foot of warehouse distribution center. The completion was completed in 2006, and it's been operational since then. Phase two was to include at the time an additional, just over 30,000 square feet of warehouse space, which was originally scheduled for completion in October of 2008. Unfortunately, it wasn't completed at that time. Now, the applicant has come before us to reestablish this PCD, to amend the completion date for the phase two development. The new requested completion date is October 1st, 2014, and the applicant intends to increase the previously approved phase two expansion by 9.3 percent, or to a total of 32,940 square feet. I've got a site plan. It might be a little bit difficult to see, but I've outlined the phase two development. This is the original site plan. It's a phase two development that's outlined in red that was not completed at the time. Everything else that you see right over there has been completed. The phase two includes the expansion of the building, which is this area right over here. It's an additional approximately 2,800 square feet, I believe, additional to the building. The footprint for the phase two warehouse remains the same. The drive in the back remains as was originally approved in a phase two development, and all of the other additions with the modifications to the parking were also anticipated in a phase two development. All right, a couple of pictures shows you what's currently existing out there. This is the back of the building that would be expanded into this area right over here. This section is behind the parking, which would be the access drive going around the backside of the property. As for a recommendation, staff does recommend approval to amend the existing planned commercial development, rezoning 9.78 acres of land, allowing for the expansion of the building square footage, and modifying the timetable for development. The rezoning request is tentatively scheduled to be heard by the City Commission on the December 7th, 2011 meeting, and the December 21st, 2011 hearing as a public hearing. An affirmative vote of six is required by the planning board, and shall be required to recommend approval to the City Commission. Thank you.
Board, do you have any questions to staff?
Just one thing on this proposed amended site plan that we have, Attachment B. I mean, we have the proposed warehouse. Is this including the proposed recessed loading and some other little proposed building that's noted in phase two?
If you take a look at the side, the loading area was originally anticipated in a phase two.
I mean, I know you need loading, but.
Yes. And let me back this up for you. This is the, this area right over here was already anticipated in the phase two, the originally approved phase two.
Okay.
This is the new building, the additional 2,000-plus square feet.
That's okay.
That's the expansion of the building.
That's the expansion, okay.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for staff? May we hear from Mr. Douse?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Mark Douse, and I'm the project engineer. Our offices are located at 536 North Halifax. I did bring a graphic that I'd like to put down here and put up on the camera. There's one little change in the front, and what this graphic shows is anything that's yellow is what's new since the last PUD was done. And I think it just kind of helped jump out at you there.
Did it get there?
So basically, what you're seeing, you're seeing this little area in the back. And what that is, it's a maintenance building. They find that it's easier for them to do some, they've been doing maintenance in a space, but this allows them to do work inside this little building. The other thing that was added was a few parking spaces right next to that. And then over in the front, right here.
I'll go ahead and repeat that. The yellow is the things that were added since our last PCD approval. This area right here is a little building expansion, which is really for maintenance. There's a space on the side where a truck can be pulled in, and then they could do a little work there. So that's really what, that that happens. They would do minor maintenance, but this allows them to have an actual building for it. These parking spaces were added here, and then on the side, there's one, two, three, four truck spaces which we added. Can you see those okay? And then in the front, because we're adding employees, we added this little parking lot right there. Those are the only changes from the original PUD plan.
Did staff have these?
I guess.
Yep.
Those parking numbers are reflected in.
They are reflected.
Yeah, the parking numbers are reflected in the current count. Some of the parking was actually anticipated for the phase two, which was included in this design.
The other thing I want to point out is how this all came about. It's true, they always wanted to expand, and they're expanding a little later than what they thought, but the good news is they are expanding. They did acquire another distribution company, and so basically, this is about a $2.5 million project. There'll be 40 jobs from the other facility that they purchased, which is in the land, which will now be moving to Daytona Beach. And then there's be another hiring of about another five to 10 jobs. So it means we'll have another 40 to 50 jobs moving to Daytona, which we think is, which we think is great. They are working on construction drawings as we speak, so the timing will be, they'll probably be pulling permits just after City Commission, so we expect this project to break ground. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to try and answer them.
Besides the jobs that will be created, it also creates more tax base.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Better than a big empty green.
Any other comments? Okay. We have no speakers, so we're ready for the votes. Comments? No comments?
No. Was Mr. Hoitsma going to comment?
Want to make a motion?
Oh, okay.
I don't know.
I'm asking for any comments.
Motion to approve planned commercial development amendment, Daytona Beverage, DEV 2011-074.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed.
Now, may we take a quick.
Let's take a 10-minute break. Let's hurry if we can and.
The only point that I was trying to make.
Back to order. Ready for items number nine? Ms. Washington?
Certainly. Item number nine, Small-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment, Fintridge Storage, DEV 2011-070.
I hear from staff, taking nine and 10 together.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, exactly. With permission of the board, what we'd like to do is, because nine is a small-scale comp plan amendment, and 10 is a rezoning for the same property, we'd like to present each one of them separately, and then when you come back, and then you can act on them separately after we've done both of the presentations, so.
All right. Ms. Smollett, now?
Good evening, Tom. Right now, our planning division. Mark Douse is here as a project manager for this application. It's a small-scale comp plan amendment to redesignate a little over one acre, 1.2 acres, from office transition to general industrial at 115 Executive Drive. What we did, we looked at the overall future land use map designation in the area. We focused in on the existing land uses and the future land use designations around the site, considered the availability of city services and the impact on services if the change was approved, and reviewed the consistency of the proposal with comprehensive plan policies, including neighborhood policies. I'll go through a few slides. Directly across the Speedway, there's Pep Boys, and you might say that this site backs up to the back of Pep Boys. It's in an office park, Indigo Office Park. However, it's contiguous to an industrial, a general industrial site. There's the site with the arrow pointed towards it. It's on Executive Drive, which leads to Executive Circle. You can access the site going off of ISB onto Fintridge, and then left onto Executive, or you can come off Williamson. That's a picture of the site from Executive Drive. It's just a parking lot now. It's got stormwater system constructed. It was overflow parking, it was parking for the business next door. When it was developed, the business next door is Behavioral Healthcare Enrichment Program, and so the site backs up to the back of that, which is to the north. Going to the south, it backs up to the CPAs, James Moore and Company. And view to the east is the back of Pep Boys, and across Executive are shared offices of accountants and attorneys. You kind of catch the side corner of that property. There's really a lift station directly across the street. Again, the existing land use is office transition, and this map shows where it is in relation to the other office transition properties in that orange. The blue is general industrial, which is what it's proposed to be redesignated to. So it helps that it's contiguous to general industrial. There are about six policies we looked at, all which were consistent in the comp plan for this type of use. Ms. Remark read one of the policies in another application that this is consistent with. If it's approved, it is a light industrial use is what Dennis will go through as proposed for this area, if you even want to call it that. So the recommendation, the way we framed it, is that it appears to meet the criteria that we have to evaluate it based on the policies. The demand for infrastructure actually goes down for water, sewer, and traffic when we apply multipliers of an office use compared to general industrial, it drops. So we have availability to serve the property. With that, I'll just either take questions now, or let Dennis present the rezoning part. You won't always have a rezoning right at the tail end of a land use change, or even know what it's going to be developed as, but in this case, we're putting them together.
Any questions of staff right now? Mr. Mozak, would you like to carry on with ten?
All right, thank you. Again, Dennis Mozak with the City of Daytona Beach. In addition to the land use change, this is a request to rezone 1.2 acres of land located at 115 Executive Drive from residential professional to planned commercial development. This would allow the development of the property for personal RV storage. Tom had given you the location. I'm not going to go through them all very quickly for you, but we are right over there in our executive circle. The future land use is office transition, which is going to be modified to the general industrial if it gets approved. And the property will be rezoned to, from the residential professional to the planned commercial development. The Fintridge Storage Site, the site is, as Tom had mentioned, is currently developed as a parking lot. He mentioned the use that's currently existing adjacent to the property. There is a use that was previously on the adjacent property that had required some additional parking. That use had used this property to park the overflow of the cars. Since then, that use has left, and a new use has come in and doesn't need the extra parking. So the site is just really a developed parking lot. The future land change for this property would be required for the PCD rezoning for the final approval. Industrial rezoning, we took a look at that. That wasn't an option for us, perhaps going to an M4 zoning district. We do have minimum industrial lot standards of 1.5 acres, and we weren't able to modify those standards. There are no Land Development Code laws requested with this application, and TOT has reviewed the site plan, and there's no outstanding comments. As for the development itself, the applicant is proposing a 4,800 square foot building, a building that houses recreational vehicles. Vehicle access to the building would be on the side, the garage doors located on the side of the building, not facing the front of the street. There'll be four garage doors, three are oversized. The front facade facing the street is pedestrian-oriented, and it needs or exceeds the minimum landscape requirements for the city. I'll give you a little bit of a layout of the plan here, of what's being proposed really quickly. The garage doors you see are along the side of the building. This right along over here, this is going to be your executive drive. Entrance to the property is through here, parking, handicap parking over here, pedestrian access through the landscaped area over here. They do have a cross-access with the property to the north to be able to access that area. The area in front of the garage doors is, the parking has been removed to allow easy access for the RV vehicles to be coming in and out of the site. There is plenty of parking, extra parking on the site for automobiles, which we really don't anticipate them even meeting that need. The elevation of the front of the building is what I'm calling front. It might say side on your building. We did have them change the orientation of the building so that this would be facing the front. As you see, they've supplied some windows, some treatments to the walls. They have the pedestrian access at the front of the property, and they're proposing maybe a stone or some type of a treatment along the bottom of the property for interest in the building. The side of the property, which is facing the parking area, shows the three large doors for the recreational vehicles, and a smaller garage door. There's also another pedestrian access. As for a recommendation, final approval of the rezoning request is contingent upon the final approval of the proposed comprehensive plan amendment. If the comprehensive plan amendment is approved, staff recommends approval to rezone the 1.2 acres of land located at 115 Executive Drive from residential professional to planned commercial development. An affirmative vote of six is required by the planning board to recommend approval to the City Commission. Thank you.
Are there any questions, staff? Ms. Remark?
I see on page four in our staff report about tree, tree preservation, they're providing more than actually is required, but is that, are they providing it just because it's already there, and putting the building up isn't going to destroy anything, or are they actually doing something to enhance the rest of that parking lot? Because it's pretty dingy drab.
They're going to be installing additional trees, and I can have the applicant, Mark Douse, is over there. He can speak a little bit more on what they're going to be doing for their landscaping requirements.
Okay. Mr. Douse, would you like to?
Thank you, Dennis. For the record, my name is Mark Douse. I'm the engineer for the applicant. And it's kind of a long way around to get what we're really after, which is private storage for a private person to store three RVs that would be used when he comes here for the races. That's the purpose of it. There's also a smaller overhead door for a personal vehicle that could be stored there. There's only three uses that would be allowed on this site. RV storage within the building, automobile storage in the building, and the last one is parking. And we put that in there because over the years, the first site plan I did on this thing was 15 years ago, when Champion Map was in the adjacent building. They needed additional parking. This was a separate lot of record. They developed it as additional parking, and it was leased to them, and that's how it was used for many years. Once Champion Map moved out, then the property was no really, there really wasn't a good use for it. It has kind of fallen into disrepair. If you go out there and take a look at it, the original landscaping is kind of overgrown, and it just, it really needs to be maintained. So the next thing we did, which was about seven years ago, is we designed an office building to go on the same parcel. And that site plan was approved, and got all the permits and everything, and they could never lease the building up. So all that lapsed. So since that time, it's really sat vacant, and this purchaser came along and wanted to have this particular use, and of course, we met with the city, and it seemed like a good fit, and we moved ahead. Again, all it is is RV stor- Again, all it is is RV storage and automobile storage within the building. And then we threw in parking because you never know if the tenant in the adjacent building could change. And let's say they got back to a higher user, you know? So, we didn't see the point in ripping out all the asphalt. We did take out some of the asphalt because we wanted to create a tree area in front of the side of the building that faces the street. There's a landscape behind there. We did that because, you know, we were trying to make the building very attractive. You can see it's stucco. It has windows. It has a facade that hides the roof. So, a lot was done to make the building look good. Staff had a suggestion to reorient the building. We looked at that, and we agreed. We rotated it. So, it's a pretty quiet use. Now, whenever we do these things, we have to send out notices to all the surrounding property owners when we post a property. And I did get a call, and it was from the owner of the office building directly south of us. And they were wanting to know what we were doing. So, I sent them the site plans and went through it. It's Jerry Glass, actually, who owns that building. And once he looked at it, he was very happy with it, saw no issues with it. So, we think it's a very, you know, compatible use, and it puts that piece of property back to use, gets it maintained. And it's been really sitting, you know, not in such a great spot for a while. So, we think it's a good use for the site and a lot of everything that has transpired. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to try and answer them.
Did you get any comment from the people to the west, the CPAs and the attorneys?
Nope.
Is that actually, that's my question. I was concerned about the neighbors to the south and the west.
Well, we sent notices to them, you know? And we put the big posters up. And the only call I got was from the guy right behind us.
And just back, you are adding trees.
Yes, we are.
Okay, I just wanted to be real.
Yeah. Well, you know, we didn't want to go all the way.
Cleaning up, and it's going to be, okay.
We didn't want to go all the way to take out asphalt.
Right.
But right on the side of that building, that was like extra asphalt. We could take it out and beautify it, so we did.
I mean, I do think the building is great for what it, you know?
So, someone is building a building to put three RVs in.
Isn't that nice?
During races.
Yes.
And another one for an automobile.
Yes.
What's he going to do with the RV? I mean, seeing if somebody knows.
They use them at the races.
They take them to the infield. Infield or the north end of the, the west end of the track or?
If that's the building, I'd like to see the RVs.
I know. Really quite, I think a lot was done there. And I think it would add to the office area.
Kind of tells you what kind of customers we have coming to races these days, you know?
All right. It's a large toy box.
Yeah.
Nice looking at that.
Yes.
All right, we have no speakers on this. Board, do you have any more questions? We're open to comments for the board. We'll take the items independently, vote separately. Number nine, small-scale comprehensive plan amendment. Obviously, if that goes, then we're going to go to number 10 for the rezoning.
Mr. Chairman, we approve small-scale comprehensive plan amendment, number 11-070, Fenchler Storage.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Hoitsma, did you have any comments you want to make?
Not at all.
No, he gets the next one.
Although he's trying to make a move.
Yeah, he's trying to make a move. I said, we're going to let him have it next time.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Number nine passes. Ready for number 10 for a motion, Mr. Hoitsma?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve planned commercial development rezoning, DEV 2011-071, based on the recommendations of staff.
Do a hear a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Number 10 passes.
All right. Thank you very much for making some progress.
Ms. Washington, number 11?
Number 11, special use permit, Kate Morris Cove Town Homes, DEV 2011-045.
Thank you, Dennis Morzak, City of Daytona Beach. I'm going to keep saying it in case anybody forgets. So, City of Daytona Beach. It also reminds me. This is a request for an approval for a special use permit, modifying a previously approved special use permit to construct a 20-unit townhouse development or subdivision on 2.07 acres of property located at southeast intersection of Big Tree Road and Oakings Again, the property is located on the east side of Oakings Road, and we've got it right over here, and it's all of this yellow that you can see. Big tree running across the top over here. And this is the recently developed apartments, multifamily. The future land use of the property is currently Level 2 residential, and the zoning of the property is RA multifamily residential. Regarding the special use permit, townhouse developments may be permitted in the RA District as a special use permit pursuant to the criteria provided in the Land Development Code. I did provide all the criteria in the staff report for you to take a look at. I do have a couple of them listed over here that I wanted to go over. There is a minimum site area of 10,000 square feet required. The site meets that. It's exceeding it. It's 2.07 acres. There's a minimum lot area of 2,400 square feet per lot. They are exceeding that. They're doing 2,632 per lot. Maximum lot coverage at 40%. They're just under that, they're at 39%, so they meet that. And the minimum living area is required to be at least 750 square feet. And these properties are going to be 1,581 square feet. One of the modifications that has been presented is the removal of the garages in the front of the units and replacing it with living area. In doing that, they were going to take the parking and expand the parking out front. The two cars would be parking out in front of the, out in front of the units without the garages. This is an example of the previously approved elevation showing the garages that were associated with the townhomes. The modification, this is showing the garages no longer over here. Parking will be side by side for the townhome development. A little difficult to see the overall site plan of the townhomes. I didn't want to give you a perspective of exactly where it's going to be located. Again, this is Oakings Road over here, Big Tree up this way. This is the residential multifamily residential that was recently completed. The townhomes be going across the street on the east side of Oakings Road. You see the four buildings, each with the five units. As far as special use permit waiver requests, there is prohibition against freon yard parking and prohibition against backing into a public right of way with the townhomes. However, these can be waived with the approval of the special use permit. This roadway is not anticipated to generate any heavy volumes of traffic, and it is consistent with the character of the neighborhood and a typical of any single-family residential development. So, staff does recommend that these requirements be waived. As for a recommendation for the property, for the application, the previously approved summer public use permit is approved with aesthetic conditions. Staff does recommend approval of the special use permit to construct a 20-unit townhome subdivision on the 2.07 acres of property located at southeast intersection of Big Tree Road and Oakings Road with the previously approved conditions, which already voted the planning board members present in voting is required for recommendation of approval to the city commission. Thank you.
And members have questions of staff?
Yes, I just had one on page four, that number five, it says minimum height shall be 35 feet. It says the project meets this requirement, meets the requirement.
Yeah, that.
Main building height is 24.
Yeah, that's a, that's an error. Yeah, we, that would be a maximum height of 35 feet. And that's a, that would need to be taken care of, yes.
Yeah, and the second thing was, I think we, I think the last time we had this, do you remember we had some, we had some discussion from the people behind?
Yes, we did.
Remember we went through that? And I think landscaping was important that we.
Yes.
A bummer.
I've spoken with some of the residents. I've had the opportunity to meet with them and to speak with them on the phone. And I think when you look at the conditions that are listed that were previously approved, they do, they do take care of some of these, some of these concerns. The rear of the property isn't being modified from what was originally approved, and these conditions help keep that in place.
Those were worked out that night with the comments.
Right, because we have a large.
So, all those are still in here?
Mm-hmm.
Or move the house around the race.
I have one question. You said the parking is side by side in front. I mean, is there any green, or are we going side by side as one big parking lot in front of it?
It's going to be side by side, and the green is going to be closer to the buildings. But you're not going to be separated.
Is that how it was previously?
No, previously, you had some landscaping up front because you only had the one-car parking.
Oh, so we're adding, that's what it is. We're adding another parking space, so we're losing landscaping.
These are apartment buildings.
They're townhouses.
Townhomes.
Right, right, right. Do they make up for that anywhere, or do they?
They're still within their landscape requirements for their open space, so they were able to make it work.
I think the people have to buy green cars, too.
Are there anyone that would like to speak on this in the audience?
Real quick, I just want to speak on behalf of the applicant. Bobby Ball with Zev Cohen Associates, 300 interchange Boulevard. Dennis, I think summarized it pretty well. Just, I wanted to make a mention that the project has been plotted, the infrastructure has been built, all the utility services are provided. So, we're looking for a minor modification to what was previously approved. And I'll answer any questions if you have any.
Why are you getting rid of the garages?
I think it's primarily just from a sellability standpoint. I think the target market they're looking for is a bigger unit than 1,000 square feet, which is kind of what we have before.
Which gives you 15.
Yeah. It's really just marketability at this point in this economy.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Okay.
John Nicholson, 413 North Cranby Avenue. I've seen this before, and it was in Hialeah. What happened is they, and we have it here in Daytona Beach, if you've ever been behind Valer Paza, those apartments have the same thing. Everything is done in the front. Well, what you end up with, if you look at this, a line of cars all the way across the front. It's all asphalt during the day, and it's a line of cars at night. It is not an attractive site. The apartments across, I think, might have an issue with it, and the people living behind it might have an issue with it. It is not an attractive design. We've spent a lot of time on landscaping, especially now we're going in from palm trees to tree trees. This is absolutely, almost zilch. So, picture in mind, I wish they had a picture of the automobile sitting in front of that. Rather just have the picture of the building. If you had seen the automobile stretched across, I think you may have a different image of it. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just have one other quick question of staff. What kind of notification did they have to do?
For a special use?
They were required to do a 500-foot notification mailing and a posting of the property, and we did have a legal ad.
And we did have some phone calls.
Right, I knew you'd said that. I just said, no, they heard that word of mouth, or?
Yeah, and I had people visiting me. It was great.
Right after the letters went out, is when we had the call.
That was as the crow flies.
That's a busy crow.
Board, any other comments?
Mr. Hoitsma?
No, I'm fine.
No, do you want to make the motion?
I don't want to make the motion.
Would you like to make the motion?
No, really, I've had my one.
Motion to approve special use permit, Kate Morris Cove Town Homes, DEV 2011-045, as recommended by staff, including previous comments.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right.
I think Bobby had a tension earlier on our discussion of the code.
Ms. Washington, number 12?
Number 12, rezoning, planned commercial development substantial modification, Hyde Park Storage, DEV 2011-079.
Great, thank you, Dennis Morzak, planner with the City of Daytona Beach. This is a request by Kevin Mall of Hyde Park Storage Suites to approve a request for a substantial modification to the PCD rezoning, to approve a PD agreement, of the approved PD agreement for Hyde Park Storage Suites, allowing for a modified monument sign to be located on the site. Catch up to you. The site's location, I think you're familiar with it, US 92 or West ISB. The property was, I believe it was about a year ago that I got rezoned and annexed into the city. The current future land use of the property is Volusia County mixed use. And the current zoning of the property is PCD or planned commercial development. Again, the PCD rezoning was approved in October of 2010. It is a two-phased development. The portion that's being constructed right now, the storage buildings, are currently under construction. We've got a picture here of, this is an artist's rendition of the, of what the completed, completed buildings will look like. The request is to change out the monument sign that was originally approved. I've got this up here for you, just giving you some of the dimensions. The height of the sign that was originally approved was seven feet. The width was 10 feet 6 inches. The sign area was 60 feet. You see the sign over here. It's a little bit different than the actual style of the buildings. It's made with hardy plank, and there's a standing seam roof, maybe not necessarily in keeping with the style of the building, the building that's under construction at least. The applicant is proposing a new monument sign, a sign that's really more in keeping with the, with the construction currently going on. I've separated this monument sign into two separate portions so you can kind of understand what we're talking about. We've got the monument portion of the sign, which is the section down below. And then we have what I've called the tower portion of the sign, which is also attached to the sign. But when we look at a monument sign, anything attached is all considered part of the monument sign. Got some numbers over here to show you some comparisons of what was proposed in this sign and maybe what the Land Development Code standards are. Typically, what we do in a PD rezoning is we look at what the former zoning was on the property, and we're able to determine what variance would be required from what the former zoning was. In this case, however, we had county zoning, and it was a county PD zoning. So, we really weren't able to get a good number to have a standard for the monument sign. So, we looked at the use of the property, in this case with the storage suites, and we lined it up with the M4 zoning district, which would allow that type of a use. And we went with the standards for the monument sign for that M4 zoning district. So, you see there, the sign height, the proposed sign, the monument portion is at nine feet. The tower portion goes up to 19 feet 3/4 of an inch. The standard size for the M4 zoning district would be eight feet. The sign width, this, the proposed sign is 18 feet 2 inches. There are no standards for the width of a sign in the M4 zoning district. The copy area being proposed is 48 square feet. Again, there is no standard for the copy area. That's really controlled by the size of the sign. And in the sign area, the applicant has proposed a sign area of 194 square feet with a copy area of, excuse me, the Land Development Code standards would allow a copy area of 120 square feet max. In addition to the, to the changing of the sign, the applicant did request to modify the location of the sign. Currently, the sign would be located a little bit further west along the boundary line of the property, right over here. The applicant is seeking to move it 60, approximately 60 feet to the east. This is, staff doesn't have any problem with this modification. It's, I've had traffic take a look at it. They've, they've given their approval on this. I've had utilities take a look at that. They've given their approval on it. And it would make more sense, it's a little bit closer to the entrance of the property.
When you say no problem, you just mean the movement?
The move, yeah, the movement.
There it is, the placement.
Right, no problem with that. Right, no problem with that. As for the recommendation, the vote of the planning board for a substantial modification to a PCD is the final action. Based on the staff analysis and review, the recommended substantial modification to the Hyde Park Storage Suite, PCD, will it be in compliance with the Land Development Code and the comprehensive plan if approved by action of the planning board? A majority vote of the planning board present, members present and voting is required for approval of the application for the substantial modification to the PD agreement. I do believe that the applicant is represented tonight and we'd be here to answer, more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
If I, are there any questions of staff? If I understand correctly, from what you furnished, they currently have sign approval for a sign height of seven feet and a sign width of 10 feet six inches with a copy area of 36 square feet and sign area of 60 square feet.
That's what's currently approved, correct.
Okay.
Give it back. That's what's currently approved.
It's nice we have these tables here. Now you're going to leave that with the board secretary.
Are you offering to carry it?
No.
His office is closer than ours.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
First of all, further recommend, my name is Glenn Storch and Kevin was not able to be here tonight. Kevin's in North Carolina and asked me to fill in. You may remember the site. This is the site that was the old motorcycle school, the hotel. It was deteriorating, it had a lot of terrible things associated with it, to be honest with you. And we're able to work closely with you and with the city, with the city commission. And as a result, we now have a $7 million project that's going in place, $7 million in tax base. The sales of the suites are proceeding at pace and things are going very well. So that's the good news. And as you can tell from the sign, it's under construction and literally half-built at this point. So that's really nice, too. At one point, they were looking at a Key West style on this site. It is now a Mediterranean style, you know, we're required to have a style, and so it's a Mediterranean style. And that's what you're seeing with.
Can we? Can we get the little thing up on the, oh, there, thank you.
It's not nearly as cool from this angle. But again, one of the things we were so, that was so important to us is how this looked because this is a gateway for Daytona Beach. And if you notice that first sign that was placed up there, it looked like a typical storage sign and like something you see everywhere else. And that's not what these things are. These things are actually, when it says the word Hyde Park Storage Suites, that's what they're talking about, storage suites. I mean, the people that come in here and buy these things, the guy that just built that, was planning on building that RV building for himself, that's what these are, only they're kind of minimized. Some people have called it a man cave, we've heard that before.
Right.
That's right. Where they're allowed to bring their, you know, keep their expensive cars and keep their RVs in storage, help bring them down to Daytona in the first place and promulgate business for ourselves. So yes, we're very pleased with where this is working and I didn't know there was such a market for this, but apparently there is. And so it's a good thing. And since we are now going with a Mediterranean style and since this was a very special thing, not just a typical storage area, they've designed this, which is, there's no electronics on it, no changing sign, so we're out of that area. But it's, it's a Mediterranean style sign that would tie in with the dimensions and with the.
Can you sort of move that thing down so we?
I want to be able to move the camera.
No, we can't move the camera, okay.
In fact, I can.
Probably do it.
No, that's good, that's good.
See it that way?
No, he moved it.
Okay.
But that's the way it was supposed to do. It was supposed, it was designed, and these guys obviously care about what they're doing because they put a lot of time and effort into designing the sign so that it now conforms and works with the building itself and actually provides something that's a little more special than just a typical signage that we're coming in with. Obviously, it costs a great deal more to do this, this sort of a sign, but in keeping with, again, how special this building is, that's, that was their desire. The tower is somewhat of a throwback to how we used to do things. There was a time when signage really identified the building and identified the business and was special. And in fact, the Mediterranean tower coming into our site, coming into Daytona, across from the college, was in fact, at one point, supposed to be signage for the subdivision that was there. So that was the sort of thing that we were looking at, as we were looking at trying to provide for something that fit this particular design and this particular style. Hopefully, we've accomplished that. Obviously, we also, I know that, that my client also worked with staff on this. Hopefully, it is far better than what we were looking at before. It does, I also like the location better because the other location was much further down the road and I think this helps to indicate where the entrance is. And I also hope that everyone has been pleased by what you're seeing out there now, as far as the construction and as far as what it's replacing. So if there's any questions, I don't know if I can help, but somebody might be able to.
Are you sure that signs it to scale for the rest of?
I asked that question to make sure. Yes, it is, is that correct?
Is that the placement?
The placement is actually, I think, a little further out.
Okay, where's, where's, how close is it to the street, to US 92?
Um.
Isn't that the access road?
That's what I'm saying, I can't put it.
We're actually going because this is the access road.
Okay, so it's in front of the access, it's between the access road and US 92?
That's my understanding.
Okay. And it says Hyde Park. I also noticed when we had the camera panning, it's Hyde Park on the front of those two 30 foot towers. Says Hyde Park. Did I see that when the camera panned underneath those?
On the model.
On the model?
Yeah.
Uh-huh. And that's supposed to be out there?
That's not considered signage?
Well, you are entitled to wall signage and you are, and you're entitled, entitled to signage along the streets, but yes, that's correct.
Okay, mm-hmm. And do we?
According to the PD, we'll have to check the PD.
Yeah, I didn't recall.
Yeah, and honestly, I don't, I don't know anything about the wall signage. I know that this model was prepared actually a little prior to the final version for the Mediterranean style, so I don't, do you have an idea whether there's wall signage on there?
No, right. Thank you. The wall signage will come in to, to our zoning official who's going to verify that the wall signage that's going to be on there is what was approved with the planned development agreement, so.
But we're saying there is wall signage somewhere.
Yes, I think there is, but I can't say that that's exactly what it is. But whatever was, that was approved is what you're going to get on the, on the building.
Because I will say, having driven out there and seen these, you know, it's always different looking at that, it's always different reading little things. These are huge, these towers. They're right off the, right as you come around 92. I mean, yes, it's our gateway and they're huge and they make a statement. I quite frankly, if we had that kind of signage on both towers and we have this, I would not be in favor of doing this. That's too much. I mean, you might as well just have an electronic message center sign because you're just screaming where you are.
You could do that.
No, you can't, actually, you'd have to change the, you know, because, and for what reason, I mean, eight feet is the maximum, why are we looking at nine feet? Why are we looking at 19 feet and three quarter inches of the tower?
The tower itself is just simply part of an architectural style.
I know, but.
Architectural feature.
But it is part of the sign.
It's part of the sign.
It is, the architectural feature is something that's important to tie this together. You're right.
Okay, but why, why are we exceeding everything? I mean, you were asking for 61 percent, you know, we're more than doubling the sign area, well, actually, two and a half, three and a half, we're three times bigger.
Three times.
More than three times bigger for the sign area, for what reason?
I mean, I'll tell you the truth. It looks to me, and I don't have Kevin here tonight, and I'm working with staff, I am sure that what they were trying to do was to do something commensurate with the building itself. So it all looks like it's designed together as opposed to just a sign stuck out there in front. So it, the idea was to design it in such a way where it fit the building. And as you say, those towers are big. And so, yes, there was.
They sort of slap you in the face coming around the curve.
Honestly, I thought, I thought we had a motorcycle college slapped you in the face.
Well, looking the way it did, of course, but, you know, obviously, looking the way it did, but, you know, that's, that's, that's a huge increase. And I, I mean, I don't see a safety reason, I don't see, you know, you can argue aesthetics.
There is aesthetics.
You're right between the, I mean, that sign, it's all, it's a very narrow area between that access road, having just driven out there where that's going to be and where US 92, and coming around that, because you're coming around a curve when you're heading westbound. Where I see that sign, it's almost like you feel like you'd hit the sign. I mean, it's just, you're right there.
If it is a location issue, we can certainly look at that.
Yeah. In terms of safety and curve in what you see, I do think actually that location is a little too close to the curve.
I think we can look at that. Again, I don't think, I think really what they were trying to do is to make an architectural statement. It doesn't have anything to do with safety. We're not worried about people having to rush around and look for this thing as an emergency. This is not a hospital. So what we're all looking at doing is, is these people who are buying these units, I think expect a certain upscale nature and that signage is part of that upscale nature. And that's what we were trying to accomplish, especially for the gateway to the city. And I, and I think, to be honest with you, getting clients to put the money into things like this is an important thing for the city if we're going to try and get our gateway brought up to speed. They put a lot of money into the building itself and the signage for them.
Yeah, it's lovely.
And the signage for them is part of that building itself. But it's, it's not because they're trying to create some kind of buzzing, electronic nature, please come here. I think they were trying to see this as something that really worked with the building.
Just for the record, this tower is a half foot smaller than the hospital sign and it's not electronic. This is 19 feet three, thirty-three fourths inches. We used to prove 19 and a half.
Oh, okay.
That was electronic.
That's a, that's a good point.
And it's a lot closer to the street. It's like half again, the space close to the street.
Again, as far as location, I can.
Didn't, didn't it say that traffic had looked at the new location and that it wasn't a problem?
Yeah, we did have the traffic engineer do a review on this to make sure that it wasn't going to compete with any sightlines for the automobiles and they found it acceptable.
But I have no, no problem with the idea of looking at that part again if that's an issue. If you want to look at the actual location and moving it around some, we weren't trying to scream right next to the road. We were trying to put it at the most acceptable location we possibly could. And again, for us, it's a, it's an aesthetic statement. It isn't something that we're trying to do to, to get all this business because, to be honest with you, these units are already sold or will be sold.
No, and I, I mean, I think it's certainly seeing it like that, I think is much better than seeing it like this. And aesthetically, I think, yes, I mean, I agree with all that, but I do think that that placement, traffic's driving out, they're looking for line of sight, but I don't think they're thinking of the impact of just seeing all of a sudden that that's there. But I am also really curious, I think it takes away from the aesthetics, having that and then having that huge wall graphic on both those towers. I think.
But then the tower, I guess, is supposed to, the tower that's on the sign is kind of.
No, I mean, no, but those, right, but those two towers have it on front. So I just think that that's, I think that you would get more bang for your buck if it weren't all, it seems like, yeah, it just a little bit, because it seems like it's all just right in there.
I have no.
And aesthetically, I just think that that's a problem.
We're okay with that, right? I think that we could, we can serve.
You know, I think there's a happy medium, even if you came over maybe eight feet or some, you know, from where it is.
I don't think that's a problem at all. I think what we can do is we can work with staff to find a more acceptable location and.
I mean, you're still close to your entry and that's what we want.
I agree, and if we want to get wall signs, so that's fine, but I have, I have no problem with the idea of stipulating that we will work on relocating it to a more acceptable location a little further down the road. You feel right?
I don't even think you need to, I mean, I would be comfortable not stipulating, but I just.
My only concern is, under the terms of the PUD, I've got to, you've got to tell me.
Put it somewhere.
Put it somewhere other than where it was.
Well, I would like to compliment him on bringing in the.
Yeah.
No, they've done a nice job.
Absolutely. It's wonderful.
I wish I had one of these to play with.
The future. Well, these guys, these guys, I got to tell you, these guys have been a class act. I've loved working with them. They did exactly what they said they would do. And Richard, you remember our meeting, they said they were going to come in here and do this and pour money into the city. They did that. And like I say, I was, I was kind of surprised that they would be able to sell these things. They're selling. So we're very pleased and this is going to be a tremendous upscale to, or uptick to the tax base.
Why did you ask for the sign you asked for before?
Because.
What has happened that's caused you to think you have to go three times?
I will tell you, I'll tell you the truth. When we were doing this before, the sign was an afterthought. And so now that they've had the chance to look at this and work closely with staff and work on the architectural designs and change the architectural design, you see that sign that was in the, in the PUD itself was sort of reminiscent of a, of a Key West style, lap siding, tin roof. Now that we're changing this to a, to a Mediterranean style, which is more substantial, more upscale, they really wanted to take the time and spend the time designing the sign.
Now, you don't think you can live with eight feet and 120 feet?
It's not a matter of living with it, it's a matter of honestly, what's best for the community and what's best for the, for the aesthetics.
Yeah.
And I just, I just, to be honest with you, I wish more people would do things like this and invest in those sort of architectural.
Yeah, I just feel like we get back in this, you know, here we go again. You know, we go through this, you know, we spend years getting this thing brought to where we're comfortable with it. And then the next thing, you can just see it beginning to creep again, up and out and, and it, it just makes it terribly difficult all the time. We just make it harder on ourselves. Each time we let it go, then we can go a little bigger the next time. You know, it's just precedent. It's always a nightmare.
I was going to suggest, you're approved for seven feet, already take the tower away and go up to eight feet and go with those parameters. And you've got a monument sign that would fit and be within the requirements.
Well, I mean, obviously, that's your prerogative, but.
And your monument sign, you want to change the construction of it, that's, that's fine.
I personally.
A little roof on, on the monument top, you can do that.
Yeah, I mean, I personally think this is an opportunity. I think it's an opportunity to do something really upscale for the community. And when I'm looking at the fact that you granted a 19-foot electronic sign at 92, and this is something that's really only for aesthetics with no electronics whatsoever, and no signage, by the way, it's not a 19-foot sign, it's a 19-foot tower with an eight-foot sign.
How wide and big is this tower exactly?
I beg your pardon?
What is this tower exactly?
How wide is it?
Well, yeah, it's sort of hard to tell with the roof and the tower width and this little drawing we have.
Yeah, our code would call it a 19-foot sign.
Yeah.
I understand, I understand, but, but, but under a PUD, we can provide you exactly what that is going to be. And let's face it.
I understand what you're saying.
What would you think about going eight feet, 120 feet and allowing, allowing the tower to go up a little bit?
That's what I was thinking.
Just to try to get the feeling for the tower, just as long as it doesn't have advertising on it.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I, I think, I agree with you, Mr. Hoitzma.
No, no, excuse.
That was me. I said, looking at the tower itself, on the side of the unit, or what they're actually showing.
Mm-hmm.
showing, that is the way it's structured, just the way you described it.
But if it came, if you stayed within your monument size, your eight feet and your 120 square feet, especially since you were happy with seven feet and 60, if you stayed within what would be, and when you go out on the Fentress, which is M4, those monuments are, it's very nice, it's readable, it's, it's big enough, I think you've gone overkill here, I agree with Mr. Hoyt, so if the, if the monument stayed within these.
Eight and 120.
Eight and 120 and then you scaled your tower to that.
He's just put it right here, if you take a look at that.
I think, yeah, well, that's what I was looking at these, but it's so hard to tell with all those lines.
Hold it down so you can see.
Oh, okay, good.
Let me scale it down, so you hold it down so it's.
Right. And what would that, so what would the height be then for the tower?
Well, the tower's like 19-something.
And what would the height be if we'd scaled it back?
Well, you would do it in proportion.
Yeah, with two feet or something like that, two.
Yeah, if it's eight feet, you would probably go no more than, yeah, 12.
Four feet.
Probably about 12.
Well, yeah, and then they have a design with.
They still have the same.
Lighting, so that would have to be in consideration, you know, to what height that the lighting would be affected.
Right.
Obviously, my client's not here, but I, I think that's a reasonable approach to solving this problem because like I said, this is for aesthetics, so if that solves a problem, I think that's a, a good thing for my client as well.
But we still, the tower is still part of the sign.
Yeah.
Every sign is going to be all kinds of attachments to signs. The tower on this is part of the sign. I, I still feel the total height of the sign should be the eight feet. I mean, that's the standard that we have.
You're saying including, including the tower, you want, you want the tower to be eight feet, or lower?
I want, I want the max height of the sign to be eight feet, that's the only standard that we have to work with.
Yeah, I understand, but.
And I, I understand the flexibility.
Right.
And I'm sure you can design a very nice Mediterranean eight-foot sign. As Tracy said, some of the, the monument signs along Fentress.
They're lovely.
Are really quite impressive and they're, they're built within the, the sign standards. And given the background of these buildings and especially with the, the lettering on the sides of the buildings, I think there's going to be no chance that somebody's going to miss Hyde Park.
Yeah, again, I, I don't think it's a matter of somebody missing Hyde Park, I really think it's a matter of, of these guys having an aesthetic vision as to how they want this to, to be for their upscale area and, and for the gateway. And, you know, I mean, again, we can slap a eight-foot sign out there, that's not a problem, we can do the exact sign we've got there now. I don't think that's what they were hoping for, I think they were hoping to work in partnership with the city to really do something special. And I can understand if, Mr. Hoyt's comment, that we want, maybe want to downsize this some and if we want to look at the idea of eight feet so that we're, our sign area is not, is not any different, I can, I can understand that, eight foot 120 and bringing the sign down to 12 so it's consistent, I think I can deal with that and I'll convince my client that's a good thing to do. Because I, you know, I live here, as you know, and I'd really like to see anything we can do to create better aesthetics, especially for international Speedway. And I think this is one of those things where people, somebody's willing to spend the money to do it and we may have differences to the size, but as far as what we're actually trying to accomplish here, this is, we're trying to make it a little special and I think that's what we've accomplished here, so that's, I'm willing to take.
I would have been more amenable if I weren't looking at those big Hyde Parks on both of those 30-foot towers because that, I'm sorry, that just changed, seeing that just changed my whole feel about this because I also know how those, those towers, how they impact our gateway. It may be in the PD, it may not, we don't know what size, so quite frankly, that's part of what's coloring how I feel about this. Because it's still, you may call it aesthetics, it's still a sign. It's a sign. As Mr. Hoyt'sma pointed out, it's a sign.
I think the tower is distracting from the sign.
I see, I like the tower.
They're tying to the other two.
I like, I like the tower.
In defense of the monument sign, you know, like that we're saying on our, on Fentress, but the buildings on Fentress are box buildings, most of them.
Yes.
You know, they don't have a design like this.
Even agreeable with the tower as long as it's a shorter tower.
Okay, you agree with that?
Yeah, I mean, I am agreeable with that, but, yeah.
And like I said, what I would just suggest is.
I understand what you're saying.
We change our request to eight foot 120 and 12, that, if, if that solves your problem.
Well, I guess the way.
Go ahead and try and make it electronic while you're at it.
Next time, maybe.
Maybe get 19 feet on it.
We really didn't need that comment.
Again, this, this, this will be your best possible neighbor because like I say, these guys, you're not going to see anybody probably even coming in and out of these things except for during events, so it's, it's, I think it's a wonderful use.
Make a motion, we approve rezoning of the license plate and commercial development Hyde Park Storage, PCD, substantial modification, BEV 2011-079 and we had eight, 12.
And 120.
And 120.
Right.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
All right.
Thank you very much and we look forward to seeing this. Y'all take care now.
Thank you. On to other business, number 13, Downtown Balloon Road Redevelopment Area Board of Miss Washington.
Yes, Downtown Balloon Road Redevelopment Area Board met October 4th, 2011, 12:00 PM here in City Hall Commission Chambers. We had our staff report, the updates from the police department as well as code enforcement. Our discussion item for the day was the land development code. We were given updates on the redevelopment projects, including the DDPA and the farmers, the market, downtown market, and we adjourned at 1:45.
Midtown, as Ms. Benjamin's not here, Main Street's on lighting, Mr. Remar.
We had the same discussion, land development code. And actually, Jason Jeffries did a, a great job for us looking at uses and we're looking at the clearing and rewrite and how it would affect it. The only thing that the board was, had grave concerns about is in any way adding helicopter landing zones in any of the redevelopment uses in the Main Street, South A1A permitted uses.
Yes.
So I don't think that's going to fly if you'll, I worked on that.
That was good.
But it was a really good discussion.
Good.
We had that same discussion.
Oh, yeah.
For public comments, we have one speaker, Mr. Nicholson.
I hear there's a baseball game going on, I think they dropped.
All right.
Wow, Mr. Public.
Staff comments?
I'd like to, the baseball game, too.
Board member comments?
Yeah, one thing, one thing. Actually, I just wanted to thank the board for giving me the right to make a motion and.
You're just going to have to speak up much louder.
I don't.
You want you to speak about my life.
I said, well, you can't stand here.